Okay, good evening. We are back in open session. I am too on our agenda tonight is giving you the dates of our next meeting, which are February 14th and February 20th.
Come on, I can't see that number.
It's 28th.
It's the 31st. The 31st.
There's also a question from Julia today about whether we think we need a meeting prior to the beginning of town meeting on February 25th.
I'm not sure for that either.
You mean like half an hour before?
Half an hour before.
So town's town meeting, 7:30?
7:30.
Yeah, that's fine. Tell me what do you think.
I don't know.
In case we needed it.
We might as well schedule it.
Yeah, so Bill or Lauren, can you let Julia know that we'll have one?
I'm sorry, what time did you say?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay. We have three sets of minutes, and then we also have a set that will circulate. That would be for the January 9th. That hasn't gone out yet. So on the three that I've read that. And Brian and April?
I'm sorry.
Hmm? I'm sorry. You want to shoot? Okay.
I could try to look at them in between things.
The top, hard copy copies. I'll go leave those to you.
All right, so Bill just handed out the January 9th.
Just for those who need to.
Thank you for all of them meeting back to the end of the meeting. Okay?
So these are clean copies. That's for, no, those are just for you to sign if you want to hold them later. And these are just as your.
Do you have red line version?
Yes.
All right, so we'll pick that up.
Can you just kind of get over?
Okay.
Is there a problem? Sorry.
Okay, so Rich has been route from the airport. He anticipates being here in 15 minutes. Okay. Next is Citizens Speak. I'm going to ask if you are here to speak to one of the public hearing topics, please speak to us at that time. So those three topics are the February town meeting articles of amending the great estates by law and the amending the traffic mitigation by law, followed by the Woolcut Wood special permit. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at Citizens Speak on a topic not related to those three?
It's a topic from the last meeting.
Is it related to Woolcut Woods?
Ah, it's related to stormwater. You would say this is going to be historic and architectural. It has to do with what happened at the last meeting.
Okay, sure. Please come forward. Just also for people to know who are here, we've been notified by the applicant that the architect is ill and unable to attend tonight, so the architecture portion of the discussion will be at a future meeting, but the historic portion of the discussion will be tonight. If there's anybody here who just for the architecture, I wanted to let you know.
My name's Kevin Walker, 1776 Canton Ave. A director butter to the proposed Walcott development. I had hired a engineering firm, I'm sorry, engineering firm that was sending it directly to, to the, to the board directly at Beals and Thomas do a peer review on the engineering on the project. And after listening at last week's meeting, or two weeks ago, I did notice there's some board members that are looking for peer reviews. And I also see there's some resistance to peer reviews. The chair person made a statement that the town's engineering department would be doing a peer review for this project. That's what I understood it to be. It's not their job. The taxpayer and the size of this project, it's right here. It's all about public projects. The town engineer wrote a letter, and in that letter, he had stated that, that these are initial comments and concerns. He sums it up at the end, who's going to own the utilities? And to summarize, the utilities, except for the water, on the private property would be the development, except for the, except for the water. And when it gets to the street and on the street, then it would be the town. The town has no business using any resources to put towards peer reviews. So it wouldn't even be a peer review. It wouldn't be independent. The peer review that I've supplied is bylaw compliance, there's 16 comments, which says that this bylaw is not in compliance, this special application is not in compliance, doesn't have all the materials. Roadway and sidewalk nine, stormwater and drainage, there's 54. There's 18 additional ones. Then the STANTEC report. The planning department hired STANTEC. If you go to Northland's website, partners best in the industry, collaborating, connecting, committed. Who does work for Northland? Unbelievable. I'm telling you, if there was ever a need for peer review, it's now. Full peer review. The neighborhood came out. I'm a member. I assume that everybody got Hill Smith's letter. I mean, these are the residents, this is the neighborhood. There should be no resistance. I suggest a walk down to woodman. You're walking up in the woods, does this look like it's going to be rural? Look at the architecture. Look at that wall. Oh yeah, that's a piece of granite thrown on there. There's no details. Remember in the meetings, remember we were going to do something better and different? A new architect? This board, that STANTEC was the start of creating findings. You went back and forth, you created some documents, you got them on there. They're not complete. There's a conflict in interest. It did a simple list, general bylaw compliance, does it meet it? No. Site planning, including open land. The information isn't there. There would be more comments, but the information is not on that set of documents. Roads and sidewalks, handicap accessibility, safety, with the grades you're going to have, go up to Pulte Homes. They got curves, and those are spread out. This is going to, this isn't rural. This is a cluster development, clustered together, and it needs to be safe, and it needs to meet the bylaw. Historical restoration. I mean, go to towns like Wells and Conker. They have a checklist, they get them, those are 10 pages long on their websites. There's nothing in this, in this package, even addressing it, and it's supposed to be part of the package. Obris, one of the board members, hey, let's hire an Obris, right? Maybe, well, it's right in here. It's supposed to already be hired and have a plan. No one has gone and looked at this list that Mr. Clark put together and said, is this stuff actually here? This is not a true statement by Mr. Clark. All components of the great estate PUD special permit been addressed by this application package? No. Wrong. Not correct. It's, it's so simple. Get the peer reviews, go back and forth, build a record, and make sure that this doesn't happen. And when you go through that peer review, you're going to see like, wow, why didn't STANTEC pick this up? Maybe there's some stuff in there that, you know, maybe they made a mistake. But it needs to be done, and it needs to be done architecturally also. The drawings have been completed. I heard all their general subjective. No, you don't even have cross-sections. You don't have calculations. You don't have distances. You have nothing on those plans. Nothing. I mean, and look, and look at all these special meetings and executive sessions at the cemetery. Why not just raise the bar? The developer, Mr. Whiteside, created the bylaw. At least you can do is try to mean it and make a good faith attempt at it. It's not a big deal. Well, I have to say, I've actually enjoyed this process because I've learned a lot, and I see what's going on with government and truth. Okay? It's what's true, in facts. You can say whatever you want, what you've been doing for the last four years since you've been on the board, but if it's not right, it needs to change. You can't show feveritism like this. It's a slippery slope. And believe me, I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure that this meets the bylaw. I mean, I don't think it's a hard task. The neighbors want it, so, you know, give it to us. Give us, give us something that's a checklist, that checks the plans, and addresses all these issues. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to the board at Citizens Speak on a topic that's not on the public hearing agenda? Seeing none?
I just have a question while we're on the topic. STANTEC, is that an independent peer review?
Okay. Okay. So we will now open the public hearing on the town meeting articles, the first of which is amending the great estates by law. Okay, so we had a discussion about this when we learned that the select board was in fact going to have a special town meeting in February. So the board discussed amendments to section 3Q subsection 7, and there are three items in particular that we wanted to send to the town meeting to consider in revision to this. The first has to do with a setback, and it can be found in the sentence that says, new townhouse units shall not be constructed less than 550 feet. And the language had been from an existing street. What we added was from an existing street providing frontage for the project. And the logic that we had was that the collective consensus of the board was that that was the actual intent when the bylaw was drafted, that it would apply to Canton Avenue, which is the street providing frontage in this case. At the time of town meeting, there were some amendments made in this section right up to the moment of town meeting, and at that time, there was a sentence that had been in the original language that was taken out, and that sentence is now being added back. And that's the last sentence, which reads, "No building in a great estate PUD shall exceed 35 feet in height, provided that the pre-1900 dwellings may be retained and converted to condominium use at their original height." And then the third item has to do with the language that was conflicting in some ways, where it said that the great estate PUD shall be less than 125 feet from a side lot line, 50 feet from a rear lot line, or 125 feet from the existing drive easement. And then it also said that there shall be a 75-foot wide no disturbance zone parallel to the lot lines. So you have 50 feet in one sentence and 75 feet in another. And so the intent had been, again, to the collective consensus of the board, that that 50 feet was what was desired. And so language was changed to say, "There shall be 75 feet wide no disturbance zone parallel to the lot lines, except with respect to a rear lot line." So the board voted this language at our January 9th meeting, and it was accepted by the select board and sent to the market. So it's a 3-1. And it was not a unanimous vote, Danny, for that. Okay, is there anyone who would like to come and address the board?
Last question before we go to the public. Do you have, thank you for the history, that was helpful on the last sentence. Do you know why it was removed?
I do not know why it was removed.
Do we think it was a clerical error?
I don't, I have no recollection.
All right. The, the bylaw itself, otherwise addressing height, this paragraph or the sections where height's addressed, except that it says elsewhere that two-story structures are allowed, but it doesn't set the height or definition of story. So while our bylaws in other places in residence AA have definitions of story and height, it doesn't exist in this particular bylaw. And so while we can refer to the AA zoning, this is more specific to this particular section of the bylaw, which is consistent with the residence AA zoning of 35 feet. It's consistent with all the single-family zoning in Boston, or Boston, in Milton, at 35 feet. Boston, too. All right.
I just have something. Could you ask for comments?
Sure, please come.
Make it.
Yeah. Again, name an address.
Kevin Walker, 1776 Canton Ave, Milton, Mass. I just want to reiterate something I had said, not at this meeting. So you've gone out of your way to amend this bylaw, and the record that's been built on the application is almost non-existent. So the priority has been to get this contractor situated. I mean, think about it. I've stood up, Blue Hill Neighborhood has stood up before looking for peer reviews. Nothing but resistance, except for a few members who have been pushing for the peer When the developer comes first, in this situation, again, a slippery slope. And it's not right that all of a sudden, oh, let's amend this, you know, to get this, get this development going. So, thank you.
Kevin, can I just ask you? I was looking at your design review. I think you provided a design review.
Yes.
Forte, independent.
Early on, yes, I did.
I wanted to thank you for that, and I also wanted to thank you for this engineer review.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I would like to see these on the public website. I know we've done it for other projects, and I would appreciate that, and I'm sure the neighborhood would, or other interested parties, but that's a separate topic.
Danny, if you don't mind, if you don't mind bringing that up during the public hearing on the Woolcut?
Oh, absolutely. We'll save that for then. But this has to do with the bylaw. So I noticed that you had 13.13, not that you'll remember it, but you, you might. Townhouse units shall not exceed two stories, and your reviewer pointed out that there are two and a half stories massing into the sign exceeds 38 feet in height from the lower level, and will result in a structure of a four-story appearance from lower grade.
Correct. You could see that on, on the drawings.
So would our 35-foot limit impact this?
Yes, it does.
So it would, it would force the developer to adjust those units that have.
You still have a two-story building that's defined under the zoning. So you, there's, there's a zoning that explains the two-story. You still have two-story in that bylaw.
We do. But it's just the height, the.
Yeah, but it can't be more than two stories.
Right. Well, there's, there's two things. There's the height and the stories, because the way the story is defined in our bylaw under the residence A is by the grades.
Correct.
It's an average of the grades. And so when we're, that's one of the reasons why when we were looking at the grades and when the zoning was actually drafted, we were specific about not altering the grades significantly. This has natural topography, so you, you have to work with the, you don't want them to do too much geographic change to make it.
That's incorrect. They are altering it. That was taken. That's why you need one foot, you need one-foot increments on the plans, not the two-foot. And you go around, you measure the building, you take the mean, and that's how you came up with that 38 feet.
So, Mr. Walker, I'm going to ask, I think we're respectful not interrupting you, and I'm going to ask that you not interrupt me or other board members when we're speaking, please. So there is a definition of story in, under, by, under the bylaw, under residence A, under the zoning bylaw, but not in the great estate PUD. So that is something that we have to discuss. But height is, it's silent right now, which is why the 35 feet, where that, why that was taken out, I think people don't understand completely, but it seems important to put it back in.
I'm not asking you to speak for the neighborhood, but as in a butter, just for yourself, the 35-foot limit would be a good thing, I'm guessing.
Well, no, I think the 35 feet is already defined with the two-story in the zoning, if I, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
So if you went to two-story, it's, I think it's 35 feet is, would be the maximum.
There's no definition on the story on whether you could have a 20-foot story height. I mean, not that you'd want it, but.
No, there's, I can find it. We looked at it. There's, there's a definition of two-story in the zoning.
Okay, well, either way, you're clarifying it, and it's providing belt and suspenders.
We're not addressing the two-story aspect of the bylaw here. We're addressing the 35 feet.
Just answering the question.
I'm sorry, but if you could refresh my memory, I went to a lot of the community meetings prior to being a planning board member. That 75-foot setback in the back of the development, it was always described as a 75-foot setback in my memory, but I didn't know if you had ever heard any discussion of it being a 50.
It was always a 75-foot non-disturbance zone, and even the drawings, and it's in the Beals, they got the pond in it in front, they got, there was no acknowledgement by, it was 75 feet all the way around, non-disturbance.
From the beginning, that's your recollection?
From the beginning, yes.
And I didn't mean to lead you at the beginning, but I was just trying to, was it 50 or so? My recollection was 75 feet, so the first I heard of it was at a recent meeting, that the plans currently have 50 feet.
Yeah, no, I, that's pointed out in both of those reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come speak to the board about this article? Okay. Seeing none?
So.
Any other comment from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I have, the furniture for me is a clarification. Having participated in all the meetings, I think that was just a, I don't think you caught it.
The 550?
The 550.
Yeah, I agree.
The height, I don't know why that got taken out. I can't think of a good reason to take it out. It provides belt and suspenders and sure reinforces the zoning that exists all over town, so I have no issue with that one. As I said at the last meeting, I'm still troubled by the 75 feet. Because I understand there's a conflict in the language.
Do you, do you have, does everybody have recalled, I think this was the original diagram, right? So it has that 50 feet on it. I don't know if that would help in terms of looking at it.
I know, I'm.
No, doesn't help, or it does help?
Can you, can I ask who raised that issue?
It was raised by Bill in his staff report. It may have been in Mr. Walker's consultant's report as well.
I think it was.
Let's see if we have the map that actually shows the 75 feet, because this one doesn't have the 75 feet on it.
I'm in a similar challenge. I can understand fixing the 550 setback, because it was my understanding that it was Canton Avenue. It was to apply to Canton Avenue for the frontage.
I mean, when the zoning was written.
That was the assumption.
Well, but when the zoning was written, we wrote, "No new roadway in the great estate PUD shall be less than 125 feet from a side lot line, 50 feet from the rear lot line, or 125 feet from existing driveway easement." We went out of our way, call out the rear lot.
And I remember actually being the one who proposed that language, because I wanted to tie in the road, not extending beyond, because we had only tied in the buildings. And we didn't want the road to go beyond certain dimensions. The, I think what Bill pointed out to us at our night, our meeting on the 9th, was that there's a limited amount of it that's at the 50 feet because of the geometry of the site. So Bill, is that what you raised your hand about?
Right. They can take and pull it forward. By pulling it forward, they pull two of the houses, you lose some of the trees that you're forming the grove. The other part to this was, there is, there is a 50-foot mention in section 7 of the bylaw that says, "No new roadway in the great estates PUD should be less than 125 feet from a sideline, 50 feet from the rear lot line, or 125 feet from an existing driveway easement." Then you go down two sentences, and it says, "There should be a 75-foot wide non-disturbance zone parallel to the lot lines." So you're saying two different numbers.
Two different things, right.
Can we ask Mr., can we ask Mr. Flynn to come up for a minute? Because I have a question.
Mr. Flynn, can you join us at the table? Town council, Mr. Flynn.
So in a situation where you have conflicting language like this, Mr. Flynn, does one, does the intent of one outweigh the other, or is it just a conflict and it would be a matter for a court to decide? I mean, obviously, it's a matter for a court to decide in any case, but is there an intent here that helps, that helps an argument in one direction or another?
I'm not sure I can give you a definitive answer, but I think the risk is that the 75-foot non-disturbance zone could be interpreted as an intent, but they clearly conflict, so I really can't answer that precisely.
Fair enough.
It's a conflict that has to be resolved, frankly.
Or the project won't be healed.
Frankly so. Frankly, so.
So we also understand from the meeting on the 9th that there's a pinch point in that is less than 75 feet, but there is a portion that is 75 feet. But the site plan would then impact the preservation of Walcott Grove. So now you're looking at what's the greater preservation strategy, Walcott Grove or a portion of that setback in terms of plant scape? That's the impact?
So...
When you say Walcott Grove, that means removing trees. And does that mean also cutting into earth, like, because it's on a slope?
Let's open that up on that. Do you have the topo that we can put up on the screen, Bill? I don't think I brought my grading plan. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Oh, you know what I wanted to say? I don't know if you can see it on this plan, but maybe on another plan. How many places does it... Okay, so there's the 50.
Hi, Rich.
So it's not just there, right? Is that it?
Thank you for coming right from the airport, Rich. I'm sorry, Danny.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I'm sorry, here is a spot.
So how much of this road is in the 75? We're at that clearly, but...
I think we need the more definitive plan than this one. And it might be in here, in this set, the grading set is in here. The grading plan is in this, if you... I'll see if I can find it here.
I need the numbers.
I don't have that. Yes, I do. One minute.
Okay, so it's sheet C 4.3 is the starting of the grading plan.
Yeah, C 4.4 is where you've got the plan in this area of the site. I just can't read the numbers, because I forgot my glasses. I think it's a rather gradual, but I can't tell what the... It's going up by a foot anymore.
So what we're talking about was like in this area here. So you're close to the stream.
No, 274, I'm on 4.4.
And the bridge.
274, 272, 272, 68. Yeah, it's pretty steep.
And this is sloping downward this way? So...
So is it really the road that's going into the buffer? It's not structures?
Correct. Well, the road includes, if you call it like a bridge, a structure, but not the residential buildings, right?
So...
So for the person who's walking on the blue hills, it's not encroaching on their view, because it's a flat road?
Well, the road is sloped, but it's...
Sloped, but it's low.
But it's not a structure like a residence.
It's not like a house going up.
Which number are you on?
I'm looking at C 4.4, because I'm thinking that's where it's less than 75 feet, the roadway.
Sure. So from my perspective, I mean, again, having participated in writing this and looking at it, the fact that we called out 50 feet from the rear lot line, to me, indicates, along with the historical plan, probably indicates that the intent was 50 feet for the roadway, probably to hit that one point. And the additional preservation of trees, for me, is that seems like the lesser of two evils. So I'm inclined to support the language. I'm just giving you my opinion, since I'm the one who started to raise this discussion. I'm inclined to go with the 50-foot intent in language, is what I believe it was to be.
So I'm not clear what you meant. You would not recommend adjusting it?
I do recommend adjusting it, because I think that the intent was the 50 feet. I don't think we would have otherwise written 50 feet from the rear lot line in relation to, in the way we drafted this. So I think the 75-foot no disturbance area was probably an oversight, especially when reflected with the historical plan that was the basis that we wrote the zoning on. And then, for me, being able to preserve additional trees makes it a better plan than to have this random curve in the road that's going to take out a grove of trees to protect that one point.
So, Rich, we're talking about the zoning? Right, okay. And the three changes that are in the zoning.
So I wasn't able to make the January 9th meeting. I think that's where this was discussed. But I'm inclined to agree with Brian, simply because there's no structures in the 75. If there were structures within the 75 feet, I think I would push back on that. There's a road, so it doesn't qualify as no disturbance, but again, I think to his point, if we are preserving those trees, which seem like has been the intent from the get-go, that's...
So, you know, that's a good point, that the way this is drafted right now, you're effectively erasing the no disturbance zone along the back of the property.
Right.
You're not calling out that it's just for roads. You're just erasing the no disturbance zone along the back of the property. That's not what we're trying to do here.
We don't want that.
That's not what we want.
No.
We want to allow the road in that one portion of the...
Pretty much.
Yep.
Well, then, the language could be revised to say, "Except with respect to a rear lot line, which shall be 50 feet wide."
But I think you still want to limit it just to a road. Still would want to limit it just to a road.
Correct, okay. Well, that's what the roadway, okay. Then the sentence that says, "No new roadway in a great PUD shall be less than 125 feet from a side lot line, 50 feet from a rear lot line, or 125..." Elsewhere, it says about the buildings up above it. It says, "No new building in a great estate PUD shall be less than 250 feet from the lot line fronting on existing street, and no building shall be less than 175, 100 feet from the rear."
That's fine.
So we are not changing the 100 feet.
You are limiting it to 100. Okay.
So, John, do you agree with that? Okay.
Yes.
The challenge we're creating, though, is we're trying to solve a tiny pinch point, and we're eliminating...
A little rear.
The protection for the rear of the site.
Yeah. Well, only as pertains to roads.
You can push the entire thing back, technically now, to within, you know, to right up against the property line. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but that's what this language would do. It effectively eliminates that protection. They could clear cut, they could do anything they wanted in there.
So we want that...
John, sorry, would you mind coming back to the table? John helped with this language, so that's why I asked him to come back to the table. So do you agree, John, that with this new language, it would be eliminating the no disturbance zone at the rear property line?
I think I have to ask the question that the... If this passes as worded, the proposed amendment, then with respect to the rear lot line, there would be no non-disturbance, there would be no... There would not be a no disturbance zone, but there would be a required 50-foot setback for a new roadway, and a required 100-foot setback for a rear, for a building, a new building.
But they could change the landscaping, I mean...
Right, that's why I think we have a problem then.
We have a problem.
Yes, I think you're right.
So can you work with us on some language here, John?
That's within scope.
So...
Is the intent that none of this could be done within 50 feet, like altering the landscape or something?
Right.
The intent, my understanding is, the intent is no disturb 75-foot rear, except for the road that's on the current plans. We don't want them to change that road later.
Yeah, but you can't do that in zoning. You can't do what you just did in zoning.
Okay.
Well, you can have the no disturbance zone be 50 feet.
Oh, because it's adding language.
Well, and it's macro. I mean, it's not supposed to be that specific, right?
That's what I'm asking. Is the intent of the planning board that there be a... Well, is the intent of the discussion that there be a no disturbance zone in the rear, but it be 50 feet rather than 75 feet?
I think that's... That would allow the roadway.
Be the best we can do.
Right? Right, I mean...
Well, then, the concept is that except that, there shall be a 50-foot wide no disturbance zone with respect to a rear lot line. Is that the idea?
Well, we still want there to be a no disturbance zone, but at the rear lot line, we want it to be 50 feet rather than 75 feet, so that it's consistent with allowing a road to be within 50 feet.
But just to be clear, and not to be difficult, but we really only want it to be 50 feet in one tiny little spot.
So it's kind of like, we don't want to give up that 75 feet every...
Right.
Look at the path.
Look at what?
Path.
Path is a... Yeah, that's just a...
But it's an existing path now, but that's a slight improvement only to the point of, you're going to take away the mud and put down gravel.
So this plan continues on, yes, you have C 4.3, Bill? I think it's three, the continuation. It would be up there, the roadway up at the top, so we're going further to the north. So...
So we're in the back of the property, and a little dip comes in.
Wrong way, down.
Did you say the whole back? Why do you have to do that?
Well, we want to protect the whole back. Like, we want a no disturb zone, but let a road in.
So I would say right there, that match line, less than 75 feet, right?
You get 50 and 100 called out up there. You have 50 and 100 called out up there.
Where's the 50 called out?
50 is the first dotted line, 100 is the second dotted line.
Okay, all right, good. So then, all right, so we're all... That looks like it's 75 feet on the nose, probably. If we split that into two lines. So then, if you go back to 4.4, Bill? And we're the... Back to that match line, so where the bridge is?
4.4?
4.4, mhm. And you have to get over that way further.
4.4.
Yeah, so at the top, top left of the sheet.
Keep going.
Okay, so keep going a little bit further. There's that pinch point. All right, so now, where's the 50 and the 100-foot line here?
I don't know where I'm here.
All right, so which plan were you looking at that had it on? Was it 3.3?
3.3.
The 3.3 has it, but... No. Oh, 3.3, okay. So try 3.4 then, instead of 4.4.
What's the intention here that we're looking at? What are you trying to find?
Just see, there was a question about how much of this is within that zone, because if you said no more than 25% of the area could be outside of the 75-foot requirement, it locates it, instead of, I think, trying to address Danny's concern about not having it be the whole area. So I'm just trying to ascertain how much length of it would be required in the 50.
We need some new technology here.
Madam Chair, while he's looking, is it possible there could be a road constructed in the future that would affect the point you're making now about there being a limited area?
Not without an amendment, right?
Yeah.
So...
No, no, I mean, it says no new roadway, and as I understand it, the point is that on the plans before you, there's a very limited area where there would be impacted. But is it possible in the future there could be additional roads built where this might be of more general application?
I think the concern is that the idea would be, we still want the least amount of disturbance in that rear lot setback. So we wouldn't want it to be open in the future for disturbance in there, even if they did have to come back to us for it.
What I'm asking is if we made the exception to apply to...
While you're thinking about that, here is 100 feet. So here's where the sidewalk and the kiosk are, right at the 100 feet. So this, and this is a 50. So the 75 would come through.
It has to be two places.
Yeah, it's just, it's a very limited, if I'm following these. So here is the 50, right? So it's this section in here. That's it, right?
What if we tried this from, and maybe this is out of scope at this point, but what if the planning board was allowed to grant a waiver from the 75-foot non-disturbance area for the purposes of a roadway that couldn't be closer than 50 feet in accordance with the bylaw?
Right, so do this in a waiver? So take the 75-foot issue out?
Leave the 75-foot alone.
You're right, okay.
Give us the right to give a waiver for roadways that are within 50 feet inside the disturbance area.
That's a good idea.
So can we do that within scope with this article, John? It makes sense.
Scope, it might be a problem.
Yes, I believe so. I think the problem would be if you tried to make it more than 75 feet.
No, we just want to be able to, now we just want to be able to, instead of doing...
We want to be able to allow, we want to get rid of the conflict, right? So you have a conflict where the 75 feet for non-disturbance, and you allow for 50 feet. I think what I'm saying is, can we give ourselves a waiver on the 75 feet to allow for that 50 feet?
Yes, in my opinion, that would be within the scope.
So that's, I think, maybe the best way to tackle this.
All right, so...
Because then it's discretionary, and we can decide at any point that, no, we're not going to give that waiver. It's not the right thing to do here.
All right, so we would have to strike the words, providing, wait, no, except with respect to a rear lot line, and then add language about the waiver, right?
Could you just change it to say, "Which the planning board may waive at its discretion to accommodate a roadway within 50 feet of the rear lot line"?
That sounds good to me. What do you think, John?
It sounded good. Let me just write it quickly, Madam Chair, and then...
Bill and Laura, are you able to put the article up here and do it live, please?
The road, actually, it's in two places. It's in one on the right, one on the left.
Yep.
Okay, so this would address that, though?
No, we're on the first one.
I want to go back to the article.
I'd like to be able to make the changes live on the screen.
I think I put word in there.
I had thought of waiver, but I forgot. I'm glad you thought of waiver again.
Mr. Furis, could you read your language again?
I didn't write it down, but I can try to make it up again.
"The planning board may waive in its discretion to allow for a roadway," and then I'm...
Within 50 feet of the rear lot line. Mimics the text above.
Okay, wait a minute, I'm sorry. It doesn't go to 50 feet, it goes to 75. It cuts into the 75-foot buffer, right?
So, right, so we're saying, "There shall be a 75..." So, right, so we're saying, there shall be a seventy-five-foot wide, feet-wide no disturbance zone, parallel to the lot lines, which the planning board may waive with respect to a roadway that is-
Within seventy-five feet.
Within the seventy, that is not closer than fifty feet to the back, is essentially what it should say.
Yeah, that's right. We, okay. I wanted to preserve the fifty feet.
As, yep, we're trying to mimic the language up top.
Yeah.
Which allows for that roadway fifty feet from the rear lot line.
Thank you.
So with respect to a roadway?
Mr. Ferris, I want to write the language.
Is this the concept which the planning board may waive in its discretion to allow for a roadway within seventy-five feet of a-
Fifty feet.
Within, within seventy-five feet, but not closer than fifty feet.
Okay.
But you already have the foot, fifty-foot requirement above.
Right. Fair enough, so.
So you want, in other words?
In other words, we can waive it with, in respect to a roadway within that seventy-five feet, because you're protected.
Between seventy-five and fifty.
You're protected with the fifty feet above.
Okay. Within the seventy-five feet, which is-
Since you already have above the fifty-foot for a roadway.
I agree.
Can't be less than fifty feet. Should this waiver allow the planning board to waive the seventy-five-foot requirement for a roadway that would be-
Otherwise conforming?
Within the seventy-five, less than seventy-five.
Correct.
Less than.
Correct.
Than the seventy-five feet.
Yes.
Yes.
Because you already have the fifty-foot limitation, so.
Yep.
Within seventy-five feet of a rear lot line, Mr. Ferris? Is that the point? Which the planning board may waive in its discretion to allow for a roadway within seventy-five feet of a rear lot line?
Yep.
Is that?
Yep.
Now, I understand why zoning looks so funny sometimes, because you have to work within this, like, puzzle. Sometimes you're like, what? Why did they say that?
They call sausage maker.
Yes.
Which the planning board may waive.
Madam Chair, well, there's a procedural issue here. The warrant is closed, the, the book, including warrant recommendations, have gone to the printer. I don't know if the warrant committee will be able to meet in time to change how it will work in the book. We'll just raise that. But what you'd be seeking to amend is either the recommendation or a handout to amend on the floor. But just to be precise, we're not seeking to amend the warrant article that's already-
Which the planning board may waive.
So I would think that the warrant committee will be meeting between, sometime between now and town meeting, where we could-
In its discretion.
Bring this to their attention, right?
Yes.
And then, look likely handled in its discretion. Handout, if they accept this, as their revised recommendation.
Yes, I assume it's not, there's not time to get it into the book.
Right.
Would we post it, post it online, too? Do we, would we be doing that?
In seventy-five feet.
Does the warrant committee post any revised recommendations online prior to town meeting? Do you know?
Sorry, can they?
Do they? Do you know?
No.
They don't?
They can, they don't.
Okay, so.
There's nothing prohibiting us from posting it.
Would you read the board? Can you, can you see the board?
It's nice, that way, it's not the first time everybody sees it. Nobody likes that.
And there's only two.
Posted on our own website.
Right.
Yeah, put it on our own, that'd be great.
I put it-
Doesn't need an apostrophe.
Is that in the right place?
Yeah, but it doesn't need an apostrophe on "its."
You have to get rid of, except with respect to a rear lot line, right before the which, because that was the language that was added, right?
To the lot lines.
You remove, what, you need to show it as a-
A cross-through.
A cross-through. There you go.
I think.
Within seventy-five feet.
Within seventy-five feet of the rear lot line.
Say again, please?
Within.
At the end.
Yes.
To allow for a roadway, then it should read, within seventy-five feet of a rear lot line.
Within seventy-five feet of a rear lot line. This is the worst trying to type, with the world watching over you.
Oh, isn't it, Lauren?
Where did the mouse go?
That's what I was saying.
I'm still scared by trivia at that town meeting.
Wave also needs to have an I after the A. Did you hear that, Lauren? The I after the A on wave?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I can't, I don't know where the mouse went.
Oh, the mouse is missing!
I can only use the arrows. Plug it over there.
Oh.
Better now.
Okay, I think that addresses that concern. Good catch. So our motion, then, John, is to submit this revised language for consideration, to the warrant committee for their consideration as a revised recommendation. Is that the way the motion now should be made?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
I think I probably do, right? All right, given we've just made this change, is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on the revision, or on the article in general? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a motion on that.
Motion to submit the language as revised this evening to the warrant committee for inclusion on the town, inclusion for the consideration at town meeting in February.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're not necessarily, so we haven't necessarily supported the language, we've just submitted it for reconsideration by the warrant committee, right?
Yeah, because it's no longer-
We're going to represent that we've discussed it.
Now that the warrant is closed and the language was-
It's the warrant committee's decision.
It's the warrant committee's decision, it's their recommendation now.
And then we vote again at town, we speak at town meeting if we wish.
Right, so one of, either Bill, Lauren, or I will go to the warrant committee meeting and ask to have this be on the agenda at one of their upcoming meetings and explain the change.
Should we take a vote of the board just to endorse it?
John, do we need, do you recommend we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to endorse the language that we have resubmitted for consideration to the warrant committee as it relates to setbacks and height for the great estate PUD.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will now open the public hearing for amending the traffic mitigation bylaw. John, if I may ask you to come to the table, because I have some, I think, a little explaining to do on this one. Did, um, Bill, did you give us a copy of the actual recommendation?
It's here.
Okay.
Couldn't make it anyway.
No. Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
It's in the red line.
I'm using, you made it at all.
Okay.
At least it wasn't ice. I'm always scared of landing on ice.
Thank you, John. So, a little bit of background, again, the, the planning board sponsored an article for the fall town meeting, which was October of 2018, which was approved by the town meeting, which basically allowed for a traffic impact mitigation, a new section in the zoning bylaws. The planning board at the time had limited the application of the bylaw to planned unit development or overlay districts. We had discussed at the time whether we could expand that, and at the time, we had asked for town council's opinion about, about whether that would be within the scope of the article as it had been submitted, and he had advised us that it would be considered out of scope. So when we were talking about, you know, that there would be some things we would want to change to that article, that was one that we thought if we waited a long time, then we might have applications for projects for which we wouldn't get, take advantage of this article, which is that funds could be required of an applicant if they are found to have traffic impact in the area of their development, and rather than an actual mitigation construction. And so the thought was that we wanted to take care of the scope in terms of the areas in which this could be applied right away, and address potential other changes at a future town meeting. Okay, so the background, yes, Brian?
Yeah, just to add to that, I think we also made a decision at the time to make it pretty wide. We didn't have a, as discussed earlier, we didn't have a great amount of time to really get into the nuts and bolts of this. When we were trying to get this onto the warrant, and so we made it pretty broad, so that if we needed to make revisions, we could scope this down as part of this evening's discussion. So there has been a very concern raised about modifications to single-family homes, which I think is a good problem to call out, and I'm hoping that we can address that this evening as part of a reduction in this scope, as we sort of discussed when we put this language forward originally.
Okay, so one of the things that we did when we initially voted this, and I had conversations with John after we sent it to him for his review, we went back and looked at the meeting minutes in terms of the vote, and what our vote had been was to apply this article to residential and business districts. We didn't have specific language changes, you know, like red lines of that, and we didn't have any scheduled planning board meetings between that time and the time the warrant closed. So John and I spoke about what the board had voted and what we had talked about doing, and I listened to the tape again, and we had it in the minutes, that the intent was to cover, to expand it to residential and business districts. So as John looked at it, and we looked, talked about it together, the language in, throughout the bylaw referenced special permit, and the business districts, if an applicant is doing a proposal under the existing zoning and a business use, it doesn't trigger a special permit, it triggers site plan approval. And so that's the language that John developed, was to address just the, what we were trying to do in capturing the business district. So there were other concerns sent to us by Mr. Whiteside that we, I think, will want to address. What we were concerned about is we were asked not to have a lengthy article revision for the special town meeting. So when we discussed this before, we said that we would need to address that in a, in a future revision. So what we were looking for was just to have this expanded coverage. Now, the question about the, um-
Single-family homes is a big problem. Someone wants to add two-hundred square feet to a nineteen-hundred square foot house, they're doing a full traffic study now.
But there's, there's also the qualifying language.
Five.
Yeah. So the question is the qualifying language, you know, right under, in the first paragraph, which says, may require mitigation. It doesn't say shall require.
I agree, it's discretionary.
It's discretionary, but if there's, if it's within scope to somehow revise this, John, to exclude a single-family res, one single family, I think what we were trying to do, though, is not have it be a subdivision or a multi-single-family-
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that.
...development be excluded, because a subdivision of twenty houses could have a great impact, and we wanted not to-
No, I agree. My, my proposal would be to exempt, I'm open to more than one unit, but in a single building, so that you're not, you're also, you're also protecting two-family homes, multifamily homes. So, you know, I would like to exempt, maybe up to four units in a single building, or in a single structure, so that basically anybody within a single residential building today can add ten, more than ten percent of their building, as long as it's otherwise conforming with the, with the bylaws, without having to do all of this extra work, which is not what the intention was.
But a four unit, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, you can have, I mean, what's the largest multi-unit building we have-
So that would kick the Brook Road overlay out.
No, it wouldn't.
No, that's six.
Six.
But it, there's, they have to be in multiple buildings.
Single building, I'm saying in a single building. So it's, up to four residential units in a single building. So if someone has a single home that's been converted into four apartments, they can still make modifications. As soon as you go to a-
But if a single building there had three and three, that's, would that-
That would be included in this.
The language had to be carefully crafted.
But you would have the ability to waive it, because it's a may, not a shall.
Which I would have.
Which I would probably support in that case, but, again, I don't, I, I'm very adverse to-
So, like, Brook Road-
I'm trying to wrap my head around it, four units, rather than a single family or a two-family.
So Brook Road overlay.
I'm okay with a two-family, too. I mean, I'm fine with that. Sorry.
No, no, I interrupted you.
Go ahead, I'm done.
So Brook Road overlay, let's say it broke into three and three, but it's being developed by one developer. So, let's say it's two structures, but it's one developer or development. So does that fall in it or fall out of it?
It would be how we would-
It'd fall in it, and we would, we would potentially have the opportunity to waive it or not.
Okay.
And I think frankly, at that intersection, we probably want the ability to waive it or not.
Yeah, I mean, that's not hugely high-value project, so.
I agree.
No, that, we want flexibility, so.
That's why the may was put in here when we originally did this.
This is, start getting into every single, every single potential conflict in the town of Milton, that, you know, we're giving ourselves the opportunity to waive these things because we need to have the opportunity to be reasonable. I agree that single-family is, in no case is that going to be appropriate, so it should be waived.
We never had anticipated that.
What?
We hadn't anticipated this would apply to single families.
Right, exactly.
So is there a way, John, to revise this now, that it, it does not apply to a single, single-family or, or a single duplex structure? In other words, we still want it to apply to a single-family, multi-
Yes.
Development.
For example, you mentioned, let's say you have a twenty-lot subdivision.
It counts.
They, we don't want to exclude that, right?
Single-family homes do not want to.
Right.
That counts.
But if somebody's expanding their home, so it gets triggered by a percentage of increase in their home, we don't want that to trigger it, because they can, normally, if they're expanding their home, they wouldn't, only in the case of a pre-existing non-conforming, first of all, because-
If we're actually running a special-
We just passed a bylaw which said that you can do that by special permit, right? But that's the only time that I, I think I understand, anyway, that a single family would require an issuance of a special permit.
Yeah.
Right?
So, I mean, I think, it's really, without having to cite, be that, cite that specific bylaw, you could just say, carving, you're not going to, this doesn't apply to modifications to a single, to a residential, one or two unit-
Existing residential.
Existing residential, single, single structure, right? We're not talking about subdivisions, we're not talking about, you know, any of that. Cluster zoning, this is just, you want to put a master bedroom off the back of your house, you don't want to have to pull a traffic study, or do-
Well, you wouldn't trigger it anyway, because we would never do that, but if you want to be explicit here, it's fine.
But I think we do want to be explicit, because that's a clearly a carve-out that was not intended here.
And we don't know who's going to be sitting around this table in the future, so.
Fair enough. So if we can, um, I think we would have to just add-
An exemption somewhere.
The exemption in that, in that first paragraph, right?
Yep. Yep.
Is the concept that the entire bylaw would not apply or just the mitigation measures would not apply?
The entire bylaw.
Yep.
The entire bylaw.
Yep.
Not a waiver, just, it does not apply.
Correct.
And I'm not sure I understood the example before of the greater state, the Brook Road overlay or something similar to that, it's two or three buildings with maybe two, three, four units in each one.
I think that was when Brian was suggesting that we carve out...
I'm not saying we carve that out.
No, no, that should apply.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It should apply, and we would have the opportunity to waive it.
All right, so I misunderstood you. So what we want to have not apply is...
To a single residential structure?
Right.
Not to exceed four minutes?
Which contains not more than X units, is that the point?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if there's units in town, in buildings, and I know there are three families, I don't know if there are four families. I know the reason I said four is because four is the, you can live in a four-story building and not have to bring it all up to code and every, you know, that's the limit at which you can live and be an owner-occupant, so that's why I said four.
In a four-unit building or a four-story building?
Four units.
Four units. Okay.
That's why I went with four, because you can be an owner-occupant.
So is the concept that this bylaw shall not apply to a single residential structure which contains not more than four units?
That was my proposal, yes.
That's Brian's proposal, okay.
Not a waiver, doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply.
Correct.
Single structure with more units or two or three adjoining would allow you to waive or not in your discretion.
Correct.
So I just...
I believe it's within the scope, Madam Chair, yes, to do that.
Okay, so I just want to back up for...
Should apply, I'm sorry, but so I thought of 475, but that's mixed use, 475 Adams was mixed use, so that wouldn't fall because it's a mixed use, it's not residential, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So just, so we're clear, the article that was submitted to the warrant committee due to the timing of the closing of the warrant and the holiday schedule and the meeting schedule of the boards was what's, a three paragraph we have here, and then the recommendation that would be the warrant committee's recommendation is following it here, and that actually has the revised language, so that what went to the warrant committee states what would be coming in the revised language, and then the language itself is in the recommendation. Do you want to explain that further, John, before we get to the edit?
I will, but you explained it very well, Madam Chair. Essentially, in part because of the timing, the article just gave notice, I'm sorry, the legal ad just gave notice to the public that this article and the Greater States PUD bylaw, there would be proposed amendments to those two bylaws. The article, in part because of the tight timeframe, didn't give the entire text of the proposed amendment, which is legal, in my opinion, but I believe that it gave fair notice to the public that with respect to the traffic impact mitigation bylaw, these were the items that the planning board was seeking to change in its, in the bylaw. The recommendation of the motion, if passed, will have the detail of those amendments, but the three items there summarize what you did in your opening remarks here, Madam Chair, that the original concept, as I recall, was that the traffic impact mitigation bylaw should not apply solely to residential and overlay district. It should also apply in a business district, and that that was the, and the PUD, and that that was the, the business district should be included within the bylaw, but as you said earlier, to implement that intent, it had to take into account that the bylaw as voted by town meeting referred to special permits, because that was the vehicle in the districts identified in the vote last fall. But the business district is not a special permit approval process, it's a site plan approval process. So in addition, you're just adding that language in the first section about the business district, where it's necessary in several places to refer to a special permit process, but a site plan approval process in the business district. So in my opinion, the article gives fair notice to the public that that's what the article is going, that is what the bylaw is going to be all about, and the detail is in the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. So board members have any questions about that?
I am concerned about the notice, I am interested in listening to the public, but I don't know that the public has seen the recommendation.
Do you have a recommendation, Bill, to put up? Oh, see it behind me there, okay.
But I'll wait to hear from the public, but that's my concern, because I would think they would need to see this in order to comment on it and have time and so forth, but let's hear from the public.
Well, if they haven't seen it, let's run through it, right, so that people here can see what it is, right? So, so John, do you want to go ahead and, if you generated these red lines, do you want to go ahead and run through it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
The first part of the recommendation, and again, this is in the form of a draft warrant committee recommendation that was submitted to the warrant committee on behalf of the planning board. The first red lines summarize what I mentioned earlier, they tell, they say a couple of things, one, that the, first, the introductory paragraph will add a reference to the business district in addition to talking about a PUD district, overlay district, or residence district. The second item, second red line item, number two, indicates that where it refers to special permit granting authority, the existing bylaw, the proposing to add the words "are the site plan approval granting authority as applicable," right after the letter S P G A, and again, the reason for that is because you're adding the, proposing to add this business district. Item number three is a rewording of a provision that talks about determination of traffic impact provisions. It's not quite as simple in that provision, just to add reference to business district or site plan approval, it was necessary to reword the text, that's the implication of it, so that, I'll just read it quickly. "An application for a special permit or site plan approval for a project subject to TIM shall include as compliance will allow the applicable special permit or site plan approval requirements for the applicable plan, new development, overlay district, residence district, or business district, a traffic impact statement." In my opinion, you needed that level of detail in that provision.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And item four is just, again, because you're adding the business district, the existing reference to planning board would not be applicable, you have to say special permit granting authority or S P G A or the site plan approval granting authority as applicable. And the last, item number five, there is, again, a specific insert of "our site plan approval after special permit." The remainder of the text is the text of the bylaw as voted last fall, with red lines to show where the reference to the business district is added in the first paragraph, the, and references to site plan approval or site plan approval special, granting authority are added in the rest of the text. So to say it another way, items one through five state the concept of what the edits are going to be, and then the remainder of the text after the ball face traffic impact mitigation is the actual text of the bylaw as it would be changed by this amendment.
And then, John, on page five, you changed and capitalized the word "fund," because it's a defined term, is that right?
Yes, correct, thank you.
Okay, before we hear public comment, any other questions or comments on the board? Okay, thank you, John, we may call you back up. Okay, is there someone in the audience who would like to address, yes, Mr. Whiteside? Thank you for your detailed comments, Mr. Whiteside.
Not at all, my pleasure. I'm going to keep it brief, because you've got stuff to do tonight. I hear what John says, but, you know, I, I went into town hall, the ad in the paper, as you know, says, "to see if the town will vote to amend Section 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, by amending the subsection entitled 'Traffic Impact Mitigation.'" That's what it says, and it says, "any member of the public who's interested can go to town hall and ask the town clerk or the planning director for the article." So I went in to the planning director, and I said, "Could I have a copy of the article?" And he gave the three paragraph article, and I said, "Where's the text?" And he said, "Oh, the text isn't done yet, and it seems to me that if you're advertising text, or you should be advertising text, in this ad that you put into the paper," and the text hadn't even been written, "that you've got a legal problem." And the town council may have a different opinion, but my opinion is that the ad, since there was no text sitting here at town hall, the text that you're going to submit to the town meeting, you're not going to submit that three paragraph...
Description.
Article, or, I guess, it wasn't article, the three paragraph article that Bill Clark gave to me, you're not going to submit that, you're going to submit this, this recommendation. And I haven't had an opportunity to really think about it, and I, thinking on the fly is something that is always nice to be able to do, it's somewhat difficult for me. So I don't think that the process gave the public the notice the public was entitled to, and I think that in the future, your ad should give a little summary of what the article is about, not say, "If you want to know what the article is about, you've got to go to town hall and ask for it." That's not the purpose of, the purpose of the statute. I'm sorry that you didn't do any of the changes that I suggested in December and provided them to the board in December, and there was plenty of time to do some of them, if you had thought that they were sensible. I have a feeling that kicking this can and saying, "Well, we'll do them sometime in the future," will probably suffer the same fate as the temporary sign bylaw. You remember that the board committed to do a bylaw amendment on temporary signs, and it's, it's some years now, and I don't think that's ever going to happen, and my guess is that TIM, the changes to TIM, will never be made until, until that there's a problem, and they say, "Oh gee, I guess we better change this." So those are my comments, and it's always great to be here before the Milton Planning Board.
I'm sorry for the noise there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
I would like to note that we have talked about, other members of the board have requested that we do bring a further discussion of the article, including Mr. Whiteside's comments, and the next town meeting where we have opportunity to submit articles will be the Fall Town Meeting. The warrants is closed for the annual town meeting, and the warrant will close for the Fall Town Meeting in the first week of August. So as our calendar clears a little bit in the coming weeks or month, early, I guess, few weeks, we will have some opportunity to look at the zoning articles, that warrant keeps a running list of some of the zoning issues that we'd like to address, and I will assure you that we will do our best to not let it fall by the wayside. As far as what went in the warrant, or what's going to be printed in the warrant, Mr. Flynn, it's going to be the three paragraphs, but also the recommendation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Would anyone else like to address the board on this article? All right, seeing none, I'll take...
So I'm sorry, can you clarify that, please? What three paragraphs are you talking about?
This is the cover sheet.
The cover sheet.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comment before we close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so, there is a suggested change, so John, do you mind coming back to the table to the recommendation?
As I understand it, the change you're referring to is at the end of the first paragraph, after the words "traffic impact mitigation," to add a last sentence, "this bylaw shall not apply to a single residential structure which contains not more than four units."
Tell me where again?
The first paragraph, after the five redlined items and after the language "as amended," said "traffic impact mitigation bylaw shall read," then go to the first paragraph below that.
Yep.
After the sentence that ends "developments, transportation impacts," add a new sentence, "this bylaw shall not apply to a single residential structure which contains not more than four..."
Shall not...
Shall not apply.
Apply.
Which contains not more than four units. Mr. Furze, is it necessary to say dwelling units, which contains not more than units? Okay.
I'm fine with units.
Yep.
Four dwelling units?
No.
Four units.
Four units. I'll read it again, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Sure.
"This bylaw shall not apply to a single residential structure which contains not more than four units." That's the proposed change, as I understand it.
Okay. So, is there any further discussion on the change?
I'm okay with the change, if Brian's okay with the change, I do have some comments.
Other comments, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. No, so, what I think Alex described as far as public processes is just not acceptable. I don't, I don't think we've met the standards. You may feel otherwise, it may be legal, I just know it's not right, that the public shouldn't have to go through that. It's just, you know, you know, the ad gave a general summary, and then this three-page thing gave a general summary, but the public didn't have the opportunity to study the language before coming to this meeting tonight. So, and I mean, the article isn't in effect until the Attorney General signs off on it, so I don't know that we're at risk for really losing any options to, you know, put any money in the fund. I just assume, you know, buckle down. I thought Alex gave an eight-page letter, I thought these, eight pages, but it was succinct, you know, suggestions. You know, he points out that the bylaw says the rating of an intersection shall never be below a C for scenic roads, or a D for all others. The project can be denied just for that, I mean, that would be, something like Carberry-Walcock could be denied for that reason alone, because Brush Hill Road and Canton Avenue are E or F rated currently, and scenic ways.
And I, frankly, I advocate for that. If the town may want to take the position that if a road is a D, there shouldn't be any more development on it, period, until they can get it to a D, or a C, or whatever the language requires. So, I agree that the process has been flawed, and, but I guess I go on, I will go on to say, as I have with this bylaw, that moving the ball is important for this board. And I agree, the temporary sign by law hasn't happened, but there's also no bylaw in place at all. At least this starts to get us some coverage, and when you actually look at what's being changed here substantively, it's the first paragraph. So, the rest of it is, is really clarifications around that. I mean, it's literally the same language over and over and over again, and it's clarification language. I am more than happy to continue to study this bylaw for the October town meeting.
I mean, I think he made some incredible suggestions, I mean...
Yeah, all of which need to be discussed.
The whole impact and intersection, I mean, there's, there are things that I hadn't even thought of, the, that it's falling under the engineer for enforcement, when it generally would fall under DPW. Like, we haven't even really discussed, like, maybe you might remember, I don't remember the thinking that went into that, but I'm...
Yeah, and I'm happy to discuss all those points in October. I personally see no harm in expanding this bylaw, or making a, substantively a very minor change, so that this thing encompasses residential and business districts, and doesn't just apply to a very thin slice of things that are going to go on. If you push it to October, this will basically waive the impact of this bylaw for everything in 2019 and some of 2020.
When would the Attorney General sign off on this?
Usually six months.
Six months.
So you're talking about, March of 2020 would be the first time you could apply this. Anything that gets applied for before that, not voted on, would be waived, would be, would be not subject to this. So any application filed between now and March 2020 gets a free pass. I just think that's a huge disservice, personally.
April?
So, I'm a strong supporter of this bylaw. I sit on the Capitol Planning Committee, and we never have anywhere close to the resources we need to do a quarter of what we would like to do in town from a traffic impact, or traffic improvement, I guess, perspective. But I do wholeheartedly agree that residents directed to whomever for a copy of the bylaw should have that before our public hearing. So what I would, I mean, I don't personally want to pull this off for the point that you just made, if there's a way to collect some resources between now and 2020, I think we have a responsibility to do it, because there's so many things that need to be fixed, but I would ask that we have another public hearing on this bylaw with proper notice and proper publication of that text, so that people can, who have an interest, can come way in with thoughtful comments. I don't, I don't think that this is a thoughtful summary. I mean, it's a fine, fine summary, I don't think it's a thoughtful substitution for text.
We just closed the public hearing.
Can we reopen it?
What if...
Or can we schedule a secondary one?
We'd have to re-advertise, we should have continued the public hearing.
It's two consecutive weeks of advertisement, so we'd be looking at...
Yeah, but our thing is...
We can reopen the public hearing, can't we? We haven't voted.
We did vote to close it.
We voted to close it, we haven't voted on the, we haven't voted on the next action, so we may be able to reopen it, I don't know.
We have plenty more time before February 25th to have another.
Okay, so, John?
It's going to be pink-sheeted anyway, we know that, we've already heard that.
We also need to work with the warrant committee's schedule, just, they do have to, any change in this, they will have to discuss at one of their meetings.
Yeah, but that doesn't preclude us from doing the same.
We would send whatever recommendation then goes to the warrant committee after us, is all I'm saying, we can't do it too late that they don't have time to meet and consider it, so, when you're looking at schedules...
You can always make the recommendation on the floor. Just question. I'm not disagreeing with, but can we, can you talk out, excuse my voice, no, I'm talking on a plane for like all day.
You just got off a plane.
I feel like I'm not even talking. Can you talk out, just real briefly, what, I guess, I don't, can't even think of a better way to say it, but like with the, the problem of the way that, like, I mean, I get like the difference between the write-up and this, but I'm reading it, and it does summarize in three points what is there, just doesn't spell out the exact words and commas that it put in.
Yeah.
So it's not, and I know this is what anybody said, but it's not misleading in any way, and it does say what's going to happen. So it's not, it's not, I mean, for me, it's not confusing, you're not, you're not trying to pull the wool over everybody's eyes, you're actually saying, "Here's what's going to be done," and you spelled it out back here. So, I guess my question would be is, what should have, like, how many days before, how many weeks before this town meeting should have happened? I'm just trying to get it, I mean, I'm not saying I'm against that, but I'd feel like...
Let's, let's look at the schedule the way it happened, right? We had a meeting in November, and then we had one meeting in December.
Yep.
The, we had one meeting January 3rd. We were advised that the warrant was going to close for this special town meeting, well, first of all, the decision to even have a special town meeting was made probably in November, but the warrant, we were told the warrant was going to close on January 2nd. And then it ended up being extended a little beyond that, and it actually was reopened for, not for this article, but for the Greater State PUD. John worked over the holidays and worked with those schedules to work on this article after we sent him our intent for what we were looking to do. The time between when the warrant closed and when the warrant had to go to press was very condensed, and the warrant committee had very little time also in between to consider the article. So this whole schedule is very compressed, is all I'm suggesting, so, and that is why some of what, and it's compressed over the holidays. So, you know, so just even to get, for us to amend our agenda for January 3rd meant we had to do it over the holidays, and, you know, just to reach people over that time period. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands the context in which this was done. It was to work with what the board had said our intent was to do, which was to have this apply to the business districts, and not just be exclusive to PUDs and overlays. That's all it was, is the execution of the board's intent for doing that, and we had a lot of, John and I had a lot of conversation about that, what was the board's intent with what we voted, because the vote said to add it to the, to apply it to the residential and business districts. Yes, Brian?
I also think it's really important that we just, that we just, it's discussed, or acknowledge the fact that this planning board has a very long history, at least four and some odd years that I've been sitting here, of sitting at this table and going through zoning, the night we are submitting it to the warrant committee, line by line, and redlining it, and having the public participate in that dialogue at the table, and spending hours writing zoning at this table as part of a public hearing. So, to make what I consider to be a pretty non-substantive change that does align with a three paragraph description, I think it's very consistent with how the board has done its work on zoning for as long as I can remember.
So my head follows up.
Yeah, and if, and if we're going to change our ways, I think that's fine, but I want to make, and I completely agree that we have to be careful about how we have to advertise, I agree that we can do things better, but I think it's important that we at least acknowledge that this is how this board has done zoning for a long time.
April?
So, first thing I want to do is just acknowledge that I know we put you in a difficult spot, and I wasn't intending to blame you, first and foremost. But secondly, Brian, when we've done that, it's with some sort of baseline. So there's been some sort of language available to the public, and they come up to the table, and they say, "Section 1, we don't agree with where the comma is located, and we have a discussion, and we make the changes," but it's just some sort of a baseline. So, to your first question, which is, what does it matter? It does matter, because the location of a comma could totally change the intention of the paragraph.
You don't want to be doing it on the town meeting floor.
And I think that the public has a, those that care, which is probably just the lawyers of us, and I'm not one, but the lawyers in the town, or whomever cares, should have the ability to look at, I mean, this will be the law, not the summary, and they should have the ability to look at it and have an opportunity to weigh in.
Yeah, just, no, my intention, I hope I didn't say it, I didn't say it didn't matter. My question was, what is the process? Because the process that I'm looking at doesn't look any different than any other article working on. People get, and I'm not saying it's right, but how many times have you been to the town meeting? I mean, I've gone to the last, at least eight, and I've never not got a sheet right before that nobody in town has seen. So what I'm saying is, I'm just curious what was the process should have been, because from what I see, somebody got a summary, we just talked through in a, in a public, in, you know, in this forum, all the edits, folks are able to chime in, like you said, and talk through it, we just did all that, and now they're also going to be able to do it at town meeting. I mean, this isn't final.
They should have, they should have gotten this two weeks ago.
So, how many changes are we allowed to make if we're going to talk about process? Sitting in this meeting? How many, how many, we just added, "This bylaw shall not apply to a single residential structure which contains not more than four units." If we had properly noticed the rest of this in accordance with what everybody wants here, and we added that sentence, do we have to give it two more weeks again?
No.
The word?
No, but you have a baseline.
We had a baseline anyway. We had a baseline, it was everything that's not redlined here.
And how do we know there's not a hundred other suggestions that people would have come out with if they had the benefit of the language?
Well, let's have that public hearing that April suggested.
I mean, this evolved from our own edit, which I think was good, or maybe that's something Alex recommended, I don't know, and I support it. I'm just saying, from a process perspective, this is, we're changing a law. I've never seen, just from the board's perspective, us get a summary and say, "Oh yeah, this is good enough." I mean, that's not, that's not public process.
No.
I think people should have the benefit of the law, they may or may not have suggestions, I don't know, but I just think from a process perspective, you have to show them what we're looking to change.
Well, it starts at the top, I'd like to see Washington do that, too.
Yeah, of course.
So, they don't do it either.
Well, I'm not attempting to change Washington, DC.
I'm trying to do better than Washington.
I'm not a member there, thank goodness.
I get it, and I'm just, what I, so, I am a big fan of process, so what I'm, the reason why I'm asking these questions is because if this is what the board decides, I can guarantee you, next week, when we talk about another one, I'm going to be saying, "I want us to have another."
Well, you should, every single town, we've never not had one.
Not one board does that right now, the warrant committee makes changes...
All the time.
All the time, right up to town meeting, and we're voting things on town floor, I mean, you've got to be consistent.
The point isn't about what happens on town meeting floor.
Yeah.
The point is, what happens when you come to the public hearing on a zoning article?
Yep.
Before the planning board. You should have the actual zoning article to be able to weigh in, as a member of the public, and maybe most people don't, and that's fine.
Be able to prepare yourself for that meeting and prepare you.
And there's going to be changes, there always is, to Brian's point, and I think it usually makes things better, I haven't seen it make things worse yet. And then, who knows, we'll put out a colored sheet on town meeting floor, but for the folks that want to participate in the process, they should be able to see what, what we're talking about, more than a...
I'm fine with another public hearing, I think we need to move on, we have a whole, another public hearing behind us. All I'm saying is, to think that the development of zoning is ever going to be anything other than sausage-making in Milton, Massachusetts...
Or anywhere else.
Is, or anywhere else, is crazy.
I will remind us all that the Greater States PUD was changed right up to the moment it was voted on, at, on the floor of town meeting, in a pretty significant way.
And there were improvements, and there were improvements.
People had an opportunity, this is more the integrity of the public hearing process before the board, in my opinion.
All right, so, we closed the public hearing, April suggested we have another public hearing.
Why did we reopen the existing public hearing, if it's possible?
John?
Can we reopen the public hearing?
If you reopen it, you have to re-advertise it.
So we have to re-advertise it anyway.
But in the meantime, Madam Chair, should, should we hold on the change, or is that changed?
No, I, I mean, I would like us to vote the suggested revision to the recommendation, because that can be what gets posted. So, I'll take a motion.
Can I just, I just need your word that we are going to actually look at all of these suggestions and do something, you know, October.
You can make that motion.
Yeah.
You have the power to do that, as a planning board member.
But, okay.
In terms of the agenda, I mean, all I'll suggest is, you know, I had suggested, when I became chair, that we put zoning on as a standing agenda item, but when we get an application that has timing, you know, deadlines, we have deferred the zoning to work on the applications. We still have, I'm just saying, we close, we close...
The way the board has done zoning in the past is, if you feel that there need to be changes made, you bring them to the board as a redline, and you say, "Here's my recommendations based on the feedback I've gotten," or whatever, and then we talk about it as a board.
Well, I'll just add that what we've decided, in my experience on the board, is that the board has discussed here are potential revisions that we'd like to consider, are we supportive of them, how many do we think we can tackle, is there somebody who wants to take a lead on it and work on it between meetings? Because it does take someone working on the language in order to start to advance it. So, we have a list, it's a standing list, some things that get referred back to the planning board at town meeting go onto that list, and things like this can go onto that list. So, Lauren, if you could add this to that list, that would, I think, we could get that added back to the agenda item. So, with that, I'll take a motion for this revision to the recommendation.
I don't know what we're voting on, I'm sorry.
The but, the for you.
This bylaw shall not apply to a single residential structure.
So moved.
Set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion is to support it, and also to send it to the warrant committee, right? Or do we want to hold sending it to the warrant committee?
No, that motion just approved the language, that just, my understanding of your motion right there was to include that one sentence in the, now we have to resubmit it accord, I mean...
This is their recommendation, is all I'm saying, it's not our language, so we have to suggest to the warrant committee that they accept our amendment.
Yeah, we haven't made all the other redline amendments right now.
These, they have, is that what you mean?
Who has?
The warrant committee.
The warrant committee did this redline?
This is their recommendation now.
We added a sentence to it.
So, if this was the warrant committee's recommendation, we're voting on the warrant committee's recommendation, right?
Both of them are, yeah.
Why are we responsible for posting that? We're just voting on their recommendation.
We're legally required to have a hearing.
No, we're not. We're, yeah, so we're having a hearing, but it's, it's on the language that the warrant committee has submitted through, isn't it, isn't it, isn't this what's in the book?
This is what's in the book. This is the recommendation, right, that's why, that's why he was asking it.
Didn't make sense to me. Oh my God. So the only change we've made to what the warrant committee put in the warrant is that one sentence?
Correct.
And that's why I said, this happens all the time, this is constantly happening, and to say that it's not going to happen, I mean, you'd have to change... We're voting on the warrant committee's recommendation, these aren't even our changes.
So then, what are we supposed to have, a hearing on? So then, what are we supposed to have, a hearing on our own original language?
No, we're having a, we're having a hearing on what the warrant committee recommend, recommended to give the, the planning committees endorsement or non-endorsement of it. So we're basically going to endorse this redline as, yeah, the planning board accepts that with this one-sentence modification. But the warrant committees, the language is out there. This has been voted on by the board of selectmen, it's been voted on by the warrant committee.
So then, where are we supposed to have a public hearing on it?
We are, we are having a public hearing right now to determine whether or not we endorse what the warrant committee submitted. They made, the warrant committee made changes to our language. So we're endorsing it.
Let's be clear, we really didn't have language.
We didn't, I mean, that's, I think, the whole point, right?
Yeah.
Well, we had the original bylaw, so they, the warrant committee made recommendations to change the bylaw.
Right, so what, what we had was to add residential and commercial districts, which was not meaningful, because it couldn't apply to special, to business districts, because they didn't, they don't go through a special permit process.
But the select board and the warrant committee have now voted on this language, and it's in the warrant.
Well, did the selectman have the language, or just the summary?
Select board.
Select one, sorry.
Adam Chair, just to, it occurs to me that I hope you never get a special town meeting in February, in the, while I'm around, but, because all your concerns are understandable. But, just to answer Mr. Furze's question, what happened is, given the timeline of, the warrant committee had a hearing on all the articles, then they had a hearing on their recommendations. I was asked to draft a couple of recommendations for them, and I did, I ended up doing them all, but the, the immediate impetus was the two planning board articles. And the recommendation you see was to capture the intent of the greater states PUD bylaw, which had more detail in the warrant, and to capture the intent of the traffic impact mitigation bylaw amendment, to look at the warrant article and to integrate it into the recommendation, so.
So you did that, and the select board voted on it?
They voted to support the article. I, I, I don't know that they supported, voted on the recommendations, Mr. Furze. They supported the article and.
As it's redlined up here?
No, that's the recommendation, just the three paragraphs.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. I see, this is the art, okay, I understand.
People keep.
I understand the distinction.
Yep, yep.
It's like, people voted on a concept, concept, a concept, instead of voting on the.
So is this the first time, where, when was the first time that this redline has been voted on? Tonight?
When did it become public? Is this the first time the public is ever hearing, seeing it?
Oh, it would have been public through the warrant committee. I don't know the answer, I swan said when.
But Bill said the warrant committee doesn't put it on the website.
But that ultimately is not this, that's not our jurisdiction. We're voting on what the warrant committee recommended, which is this redline.
Right, but it's our article.
But our public hearing process is, it.
Right?
I'll do whatever everyone wants to do, I want to move on.
Will, but they will recommend.
Okay, so both the select board and the warrant committee support the planning board's goal of expanding this to apply to more than a planned unit development or an overlay district. They both support applying it to residential districts and to commercial districts, and in order to accomplish that, this is the language that's required. That's the only change that's being recommended. The language had to follow through because business districts are site plan approval, others are special permits, there's different, special, there's different authorities who have responsibility. Special permit is, can be the board of appeal or the planning board. Site plan approval is only the planning board. So that language had to trace through in order for us to be able to apply this to commercial districts or business districts, commercial projects in business districts.
So what's the downside of having a second public hearing, or continuing it?
We can't continue it, we've already closed it.
But we can reopen.
Well, John just said we have to re-advertise to reopen.
Well, the downside is always kicking the can down the road and not continuing other things, because we've got a lot of stuff on our agendas.
The downside is people don't feel comfortable at a town meeting. To me, I mean, I support this article, I'd like to see it move forward. If it means advertising, have another hearing, so that the public feels comfortable, why not do it?
We're going to have a meeting anyway, in two weeks or four weeks, so just include it. Give the public a chance to read it and.
Someone make a motion, please.
Okay, I, I move to have a new meeting. A new public meeting. Once the public's had a chance to see this.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Three noes and two yeses.
A move that we accept the recommendation of the warrant committee as it's drafted on the board in front of us with the redline, including the additional redline that was put in regarding the single residential structure with not more than four units.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Town Council John Flynn, for your effort on these, both of these articles.
Thank you.
All right, given that it's 9:20, do people have an, an ability to stay until 10:30?
Yes.
I'll take a motion.
So moved. I was like, I won't complain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, well cut. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Can I ask my STANTEC question? That was our independent peer reviewer for, yeah, travel, though? Transport, I'm tired.
I'll just answer STANTEC with traffic and stormwater.
Traffic, that's right.
And stormwater. And we'll talk to Bill when Brian gets back about how we arrived at that, because we did discuss that.
Yep.
In terms of who was, who was going to be used.
Yep.
Never seen a binder that thick.
Oh, I know.
We're just going to wait for Brian, but go ahead, let's get started. Denny, you had a question about STANTEC, right? And so, Bill, you spoke to John Thompson about a peer review engineer who would be used, correct?
I did. I spoke to John Thompson, he came up with several different, he came up with several different companies. We actually asked, I don't believe that Mr. Heller realizes that STANTEC has done work for Northland.
Can you just clarify, you asked what?
I asked him for a list of people for peer review for the traffic and stormwater for this project. He came back and he, his suggestion was STANTEC. We had asked if, what of, who had, we asked BSC, BSC said that they had done some work, they felt they had done some work for Northland. BHB had done work for Northland. When I asked STANTEC, the answer came back that they had not. I don't know how aware in that company.
Well, I can say STANTEC is a very large company, and they have acquired and merged with a lot of companies in, over the last several years, growing at quite a pace. So that might be why, that whomever you spoke to, Bill, wasn't aware, because it could have been that that was from a company that got acquired. I, I don't know, but I know of some other firms that were acquired by STANTEC that I used to work with, that are now under that umbrella, STANTEC.
So I, I think the other question that we were asking, would they agree to not work with Northland for a period of time? I could check the tape, but I think there was like, I think that was part of the question.
I think that's what you asked.
I think it was forward-thinking, you know? I don't, I don't know if you asked them that question.
I don't. John set it up, I don't know that that question came up. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're here to talk about, well, we all know we got word, but the public may not know, that we were going to talk about the architectural components of the project, but the architect is not feeling well, so that's something we need to schedule for a future meeting, right?
Correct.
So the other piece is going to be on the historic treatment of the existing property, right, existing structures.
Yes, I think, Madam Chair Ned Corcoran, joined by Jack Dolly, Alan Ockman, engineer, and Doug Kelleher from Epsilon Associates, who is a historic consultant, part of the team. We were originally scheduled for architecture and historic preservation. The architect is not available tonight. What we intend to do tonight is have an overview of the, of the treatment, the treatments of the, as result, with respect to the restoration of the manor house, the Walcott House, and the Devon's House as it relates to historic issues. We actually met twice with the historical commission last summer, worked through specific suggestions about types of materials to use relative to the restoration of each of those unit, of those units, which resulted in a memorandum, I think, prepared by the historical commission recommending treatments with respect to each of the three buildings. There were some modifications to what we had proposed, for example, gelled win windows as opposed to Anderson windows was one specific. We responded in a memo to the board dated November 1, that we concur with all of the historical commission's recommendations relative to the restoration of those buildings, but we thought we would do a quick PowerPoint overview of what, of how each of those buildings will be modified. And then, more specifically, additionally, there's, there's discussion about preservation of a fourth building, the warrant, the historical commission's recommended that we save a former carriage house barn as a fourth building. We have opposed that very strongly, and we would expect that there'll be discussion, we'll present on that as well, discussion relative to that.
Okay, before you get started on that, the, the comments from the historical commission are the ones dated October 3?
Yes.
Okay. And then, have you also, or do you plan to address some of the, the context, so the site, what's around the existing buildings in terms of landscape? Okay, great.
If I may, my name's Jack Dolly from Northland. If we could advance the slide just one. Yes, I apologize for Jim, Vileko not being available as late as 4 o'clock on Tuesday. We were, he and I were, you know, in short strokes from being complete in our deck for tonight, and then I got an email that he has the stomach bug, so I, I can't say much more about that. Before I launch in, I'm only peripherally aware of some conversation relative to STANTEC, and I'm going to address it, take this stick and address it. Northland has used STANTEC once on a project that we did between 2005 and 2009 under the Boston office. STANTEC is a publicly traded company, worldwide offices with something like 23,000 or 5,000 employees. I had, I have no knowledge of the Providence office, I have no knowledge of Walter Heller, I have no knowledge of Katie, Katie, Katie C, or whoever was the peer review consultant on the stormwater side of it. I didn't pick them, I didn't put my thumb on the scale to pick them or not pick them. I think my, my prior experience with them on the Burlington project that we did, that concluded in 2009, to my knowledge, had no influence on their work product on behalf of the town. So we have, we tried to cobble together discussion points for tonight, and I'm going to try to be an architect as it relates to the three historic structures, and, and some of this is just sort of re-educating or re, re-familiarizing the board and the audience.
I want to grab those lights up front, so.
With where we've been. We started a conversation on the three historic structures well before filing our, our packet, site plan, special permit application package in September. Met with the historic commission, I believe, twice, or three times in the course of the summer to early fall, and it was specifically with regard to the reuse, the retention and reuse of the manor house, the Walcott House, and the Devon's House. And, and I'll try to go through that. How do I use this thing? Press the one to the right, there we go. So, very quickly, the, the three buildings, we have the Walcott House here in the upper right, some of the yard area around it, we have the Devon's House in this cluster of pictures here, and then we have the manor house over here. As you can see, we've drawn some lines to sort of where are they in the site, manor, Walcott, Devon. Start with the Devon's House. Devon's House was the house that was agreed to be retained, and the density of units in its place and around it was reduced from, I believe, 10 to two new units as part of a final negotiation with the planning board, the selectmen, and the neighborhood committees prior to town meeting in May of 2017. This is what the Devon's House looks at as you drive up what we refer to as the center road. It's the center entrance home, there's a two-car garage on the side. This would be the backside. It's, it's almost a mirror image on the main body with a single door in the center, similar to this one. This portion, which is actually the kitchen, which is in this section here, and then the backside of the two-car garage, which has a screen porch here. Sort of side, side angle, and two aerials, one looking down from left and one looking down from right. Sorry about the eye test, but I'll start from the bottom. You know, here is the elevation of the building as it exists. We are proposing no architectural changes in the facade. There are no new dormers, there are no new openings, there are no new appendages whatsoever to the face of the building as we, and that would be along this line. It would retain its two-car garage here, this sort of connector piece, which houses a kitchen and a den, and a study, and a bathroom, and then the main body of the house here, which is sort of a living room, dining room, a little sitting room over here, and a stairway that takes you upstairs. If I flip us around 180 degrees to the rear of the building, what we are proposing to do is replace that center door that I showed you in this picture to a eight-foot or nine-foot slider, I can't read that from here, but to provide, you know, a large piece of glass as opposed to a door, that would be in, if you will, the living room or the great room there. So it is to, the architectural change is to remove that opening, that, open that opening and replace it with a, either a patio or sliding type door. That is, excuse me, so no changes as we move to the left of this drawing, meaning the kitchen sort of connector, the back of the garage with its screen porch would retain, would remain as, as it exists presently. On both ends, the garage end where there are two windows here, and then the uphill side would, would remain as is. I'll get to sort of material changes in a moment. This is sort of an elevational or contextual view. This gives us sort of what we call the Devon's Cluster. These are actual, laid into an aerial photo, so these, these trees, not those trees right there, but these trees wrapping around the side of the 776 Canton Ave, a butter, and around to the rear, exist. This is the proposed driveway that, that accesses the two units behind Walcott House, and this is a sketchy image. and this is a sketch image looking down that driveway toward those two units. Let me see what my next slide is. Okay, before I go there, let's say I go back to this. The, what we ultimately got to with the Historic Commission is a narrative document that takes each building and discusses what we would do, both in form and in materials, and reuse materials, renovation materials for each of the structure. And what we're calling, what we agreed with the Historic Commission thus far on this building is, is that the existing clavards would be removed and replaced. Their cedar clavards presently, we're proposing to, or we proposed and reached agreement with the Historic Commission to replace them with hardy plank cementaceous clavard siding. We proposed, and it was accepted, to replace the windows. We proposed to replace them with an Anderson window. We were asked to consider using a gen, gelled wnen window, which I have in the hall, which we agreed to. We've used gelled wnen windows in other historic settings, and that's the window that I brought to the meeting from outside. I'm presently using it with the Wellesley Historic Commission on a new house construction in their district. It is a wood clad, a wood, clad wood sash, clad wood frame, double-hung, traditional styled. Now styled means the styles, size of the frame, the width. Historic would like to see a narrow style as opposed to a fat, no, verse, the other way around, a fat style as opposed to a narrow one, particularly along the bottom. This is, I've learned this along the way. So that, I don't know if, we haven't gotten to the granular details with Historic as to whether I have the right window or not. I think I do. The roof on this building is a slate roof, and we propose to remove the slate roof and replace it with an asphalt three-tab shingle. We said three-tab because an architectural shingle is not considered an historic shingle. A three-tab is considered a historic structure, a shingle. So from an exterior perspective, those were the material and/or form changes that we discussed. I believe we reached agreement with. I have that document here, but I'm not going to try to read it verbatim as we roll through this at this late hour. You have it in your packet. So, moving on. So this next slide is attempting to sort of paint a picture of where we are in the site. We have the Devon's House here. We have the main new road coming up, and this is what we refer to as the Upper Meadow area. The main center road would traverse just like this. This is a new structure. The Manor House is over here. We show this because we, we think that, you know, from a land planning perspective, you know, the integration or the relationship of this area to the field and then units above, you know, is an important design characteristic, and it's, it's a tool that we have used in our thinking, our design thinking. This is a sketch elevation, standing somewhere here, looking up past. The 550 is about here. These units are about 750, 800 feet from Canton Ave. You can kind of get a glimpse of them in here. The Manor House is the next of three structures that we have decided and agreed with the town, the selectmen, the neighborhood to retain and reuse. This is the facade that faces Canton Ave, overlooking what we call the Manor House lawn. This is the opposite side of the building. This is, was considered in, back in the day, to be the main entrance. The roadway or carriage road to access this house actually came up this right-hand side and rolled around to the front entry, or if I do it in reverse, rolled around like this, and the original front entry was right in here, where it's been filled in with a daybed on the second floor and so on and so forth. This elevation is a.
So, Jack, that, there's historic documentation of those when you said they originally?
Yeah, we have pictures.
Okay, thank you.
We have a good deck of pictures that show that. We have a picture that actually shows a circle. The driveway came up around here. Alan can speak to it more, but there was a circle here, and we have a picture with a carriage sitting in the, in the circle.
Correct, yep.
And, and using that, those, those images has, have instructed us on how to consider using this building going forward. This is sort of the utility side of the building. It's over here. The Manor House driveway is coursing down like this. This is how you get in the basement, which is where the utility is, coal room, and so on and so forth. There's a nice set of stairs and wrought iron work that comes up to access this patio up here, which is a portion of a wood patio deck and a patio patio deck.
Right, right, which is a later addition.
Yeah, sometime.
Whether there were canvas, you know, porch coverings or, you know, other elements along the, the front line of the house here, things have changed over time, but there's a wood deck at present.
So this little image, this is looking down toward Canton. There's a pool now where the turnaround used to be. Can't tell you when that was put in, and this is some other angle that I am unfamiliar with at the moment. Again, another eye test. I'll start here. This is the facade that is looking down toward Canton Ave, overlooking the Manor House Meadow. We are proposing no architectural form changes whatsoever on that elevation, nor are we on what I just referred to, the basic utility side of the building. This is the main building right here. This is a new garage, and I'll come back to that in a moment, that, that is to access, to provide garage service to the house. Coming around the other side of the building, what is really the front door side of, original front door of the side of the building, what we're attempting to do is add a two-car garage, which is side-loaded off the Manor House driveway here. Add a second two-car garage off the, if you will, the left end of the building to the right, and create two entrances, one of which utilizes the original entrance, taking away the daybed that was ultimately filled in. This was all filled in at one point in time. Deconstructing that and then reconstructing it as an entrance. This is a tower. That's that tower right there. That door that I was just pointing to is in there. And then the next one I'm proposing, we're proposing, or the architect proposes, to put over there. So, sorry for all the, the back and forth and the back and forth. So this piece of architectural form is an addition of a two-car garage, side-loaded from the right in this image. The entry to this half of the building here. Maintaining the tower, stair tower, this is really a stair tower that takes you up to the second floor. Restoring the original main entrance here and adding a new two-car garage to its left. Let's see, this image here is trying to look at the building, this end of the building, 90 degrees, so if, I can't make the pen, but if, if I were to somehow bend the line, this is what this is, so you're seeing this elevation of the garage in here and the, the original elevation of this end here, which involves a low, low roof and then a high roof. And then going down below, here's the side-loaded garage that I referred to here, and a connector to get into, into the building.
Do you have a, a view which, is, is this here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that, this window is not impacted by that roof?
Madam Chair, I'm out of my pay grade, so I can't speak to that.
All right.
I did not go to architecture school, so I don't know the answer to that, sitting here. I'd have to defer that to Jim.
There is a, there is a mudroom that connects between the garage and the main body of the house, which is not, the roof is, which is not at the same elevation as the roof of the garage.
Do, you don't have a roof plan of this, do you?
Yeah, next, next slide.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So I'm just trying to look at my slides here in paper form to tell me if I can answer your question better.
Looks like the ridge comes under the window.
Well, you don't, this is, we're looking at right here, right?
Right, so you'll see a, a set of stairs in that connection? So, because the, the grade here gets us about a, if I, if we go back to the elevation, the, the text is over the stairs, but you can see that, you know, first floor elevation will be above the water table there, and garage is some feet below.
Can you go back to the, the aerial view?
So you're looking at that window and wondering its impacts?
Yeah.
Right.
So the, the two garages, if I understand it correctly, one's over here.
Correct.
Yes.
And one's here.
Correct.
And you're having kind of like a narrower breezeway or what have you in between, so that you're changing the roof line in that area so it has less impact on the windows? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
The ridge height of the, of the, of that mudroom breezeway is lower than the peak of the roof of the garage. See it in the, go to the next slide.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. She's just trying to understand whether this window is harmed as a result of that peak of that roof, and I don't know the answer.
And this one?
And that one.
Yeah.
Can we make a note and?
So what I would, if you go back to the roof plan, or go forward to the roof plan, sorry? One, one more there. So if you cut a section through here, your architect does, cut a section looking that way, and one here looking that way, then we'll understand the roof height relative to the window?
Someone make a note, please.
So in plan form, I'm sorry, I tried to make tonight, tonight as productive as we could.
Sorry, interrupted you.
Good question.
So this is, this is the garage which entered here. We're bringing it, this whole building is accessed from above and coming in like this. Trying to recreate a courtyard area as it was originally in front of the building. Some sort of landscape feature that Alan can speak to, and entering the home here and entering the home here. There is, as you can see, a little bit of cartilage between the actual body of the building, existing body of the building, and the new form of a garage to allow, you know, the connector, if you will, the knuckle, the mudroom, et cetera. Contextually, in the land plan, we have, this, this is what we refer to as the KC Farm Meadow Field, the main road, center road coming up like this. This is the Manor House lawn. This is an actual windrow of trees. There's a stone wall buried in this that runs literally sort of north-south from Canton Ave or close to Canton Ave, nearly all the way up to the top of the property. Manor House driveway coming down like this. We're proposing that we would access the home up like this. And we are clustering two residents in this little corner here above it. This one trying to capture looking out through the field or down the field. This one won't, won't make, because this will stay, and this one will be sort of nestled into this. To remind everyone, the escher is running down over here. Before I go there, so the building, what are we going to do with the outside of the building? I talked about the three-dimensional changes that we have contemplated and discussed with the Historic Commission. Beyond that, we have envisioned replacing the windows. It is a shingle-sided building. It is not a clavard-sided building, and it is, it is presently an asphalt-roofed building. So what, the documentation that we proposed, and I believe has been accepted, is that it would remain, it would be stripped, both roof and siding, and replaced with like-kind shingles and roof products, and that new windows and doors, exterior doors, would be in place, with one caveat, I believe, Steve can correct me if this is wrong, to the degree feasible, Steve, I'm Steve's.
Sorry.
To the degree feasible, I believe that the Historic Commission's desire was that original entry doors, main entry doors, be retained along with their hardware and such. The notion, I believe, the notion being that if there was a grand, big oak or signature kind of door, that that not be replaced with some form of fiberglass modern door that, that the historic door and its hardware and accoutrements remain. We also deal with shingles, I mean, shutters and chimneys. I know, you know, those are to be replaced in an authentic and straight way, and chimneys are to remain in their present form, shape, and size. I'm hitting the high points because of the late hour. The third building is the Walcott House. The Walcott House is also known as Governor Walcott House. It's located sort of center-right of the property. It is a stucco house. The main entrance entry point is here. There is a round turnaround with a flagpole. I've never seen a flag on, located in front of the house. It is a two-story house with a slate roof. These are existing chimneys. Going around the back side of the house, sorry about all the vegetation, but this is it from the rear. Egress door, I think there's a dining room here, and this is a series of three or four dining windows off to this side. This is a, more of a large living room parlor area. The right side of the building, I have looking from the front, would be this image with a small, I don't know, screen porch, sunroom kind of structure.
Yeah, glass panel.
Glass panel, uh, structure. On the left side of the building, over here, there is not a lot. Around the rear, there's a recently added greenhouse, which you can't see in this vegetation. Again, going to what three-dimensional or architectural form changes are proposed for the building. The main entry that I, that I started earlier with, this being it, there are no changes, three-dimensional architectural or form changes. The, the pattern of two windows over two windows, two windows over two, and a window over the center entrance would remain as is. The slate roof would be repaired and/or replaced in its entirety with slate, and the stucco shutters and windows would be, all be replaced with like-kind materials. There are heavy corbels, or maybe not corbels, Madam Chair, but there is very heavy cornerboards that differentiate the.
Coins?
Excuse me?
Coins.
Coins, thank you. Heavy coins on the corners here. These are 12, 14 inches in width, and they have some left or horizontal sort of steps, if you will, not steps, but lines in them. And we are, we are in agreement that, you know, that, those details should remain.
Is that plaster or wood?
It is plaster.
Plaster to look like stone?
Yes.
It's not stone.
Not stone.
No, but they were trying to make it look like stone, right?
Make it look like stone.
And the house took this appearance in the 30s, long after Governor Walcott, but.
This house has gone through a couple of many iterations. So back to the architecturals. Flip it around to the backside. What we are proposing to do is in the manor, in the, in the living room, where there is a single window here, and if you don't mind, I'll go backwards. That would be that window here. To replace that window with a, with a, with a, you know, a signature living room window to bring more light, the, the room is dark-paneled. Eight-foot patio door. The room is relatively dark. It's dark-paneled. And to take out a single double-hug window and put in a large eight-foot patio door to access a terrace that's out back here. And then this is the major form change right here, which is a two, a two-car garage, and I'll, I'll skip down here. The main portion of the building is this square. There is no garage that services, well, there's a freestanding garage over here that services the building, and we're proposing to add a two-car garage with a bit of a knuckle that would add as a, act as a mudroom. and we're proposing to add a two-car garage with a bit of a knuckle that would add as a, act as a mudroom or ante-room to, you know, to get from point A to point B. So that is all new, and that's what this is attempting to replicate. A 22 by 22-foot two-car garage with some dimension here, which I can't read from this distance, mimicking both in style and material, stucco, coin, hip roof, slate roof, kind of detailing. That is seen in another form here. This is looking at the garage, if you were to come at it from the side. So there's a garage door here and a garage door here, and that, that cartilage or knuckle cutting in. There's a little bit of a, an overhang here existing. That is, those are the major changes that we're proposing. Again, an eight-foot slider go to be accessed this room here, and the addition of a two-car garage here. And then a refurbishment of the exterior building materials, those being stucco windows with the same grill pattern, shutters, and roof. The document goes on to say retention and of the chimneys in their present form. No, you know, lowering, raising them, reshaping them, maintaining them as they exist presently. Let's see, what do I have next? Oh, again, sort of Alan has tried to provide us with some good images. Here we have the Walcott House. We're accessing it off of the road. So the road driveways, the main road's coming up, excuse me, Devens is here, main road coming up the hill. And then it begins to bend off to the right to create the loop. As it bends off to the right, we're entering what we call the Walcott Grove Cluster. The infamous Carriage House is in here, and the esteemed Walcott House is here. We would bring the driveway and the two-car garage in here as opposed to off of the road. One of the, give this home plenty of birth. Maintain a cluster of trees here. Maintain a cluster of trees here. We could have put a home here. We could force another home in here. There's a nice terrace that's completely overgrown with a stone wall retaining in this area. The objective is to restore the setting of that home back to at least the '30s, and it's probably the best we can do. At the same time, we're also trying to integrate new homes across the street from it. And Jim and Alan have been very deliberate to take a duplex unit that might have been right here, and duplex, 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 if you will, a wall of homes or a wall of garage doors, if people have accused our plan of being, and breaking it down and using the curve of the road as you were traveling it, and a, and a bend of structures in here to soften this whole approach. So this is hard, but one of the ideas of using a hip roof in here is it allows the sky to open up if you're standing here. Think of two tall gable ends forming, if you will, goalposts at the Patriots game next year, next weekend, excuse me, and laying them back. And then look through those, laying them back by 45 degrees. Your, your eye is able to see through sort of this, this, a little bit of a vista. There's nothing to see, mind you, but what you're not seeing is a very tall gable end right in here. It softens and reduces the scale and massing of the structure immediately across the street from it. We've done the same thing with the roof structure of this building, put a hip on it and a hip on it again. There are places where gables work really well, and a gable might work really well here because there's no conflicting activity immediately proximate to it. But here, that laying back of, of a gable into a hip form serves a very strategic design purpose. So the, the next series of slides is really to go to Doug to talk about the Carriage House issue, the one place where we're not in agreement with the Historic Commission. Most specifically is a recommendation that they've made to you to retain a fourth building, i.e. the Carriage House. But before I go there, I guess, take a deep breath, I'll stop talking. It's late, but if there are any questions beyond that, the cross-sections question that you've asked for on, on any of these three buildings, we'll either take notes or try to address it.
Is it something, I appreciate the sketches. Can you add sketches which show these garages in the three-dimensionally, in a three-dimensional relationship to the existing structures? And I didn't want to make sure we have enough time for the Historical Commission, so unless, unless somebody else on the board wants to request anything else from them on the, on this?
It's 10 o'clock, so thank you for giving us a few extra minutes. Doug will take the talking stick from here.
Thank you, Jack. As Ned mentioned, my name's Doug Kelher. I'm a principal at Epsilon Associates, and we have been assisting the team on the redevelopment of the three houses that Jack just went through, but also have been sort of looking at the possibilities of the retaining and potentially reusing the Carriage House for residences, as has been suggested by the, by the Historical Commission. As Jack mentioned, we've pretty much reached consensus with the Historical Commission on the general scope of work for all of the three houses. Excuse me. The one issue where we sort of are at disagreement with is the, the retention of the Carriage House. And Alan will show in greater detail, as we sort of go through some of the slides, what retaining the Carriage House does to the overall plan and the layout of the other units. But specifically, in the Historical Commission's comments on the, the scope of work, they added a request that the Carriage House be retained and reused either as a single-family or dwelling, as a single-family dwelling or as part of a duplex unit. The reuse would be consistent with the great estate presentation, as large agrarian estates would have had many outbuildings as part of the enterprise. The overall appearance of the existing exterior architectural features should be preserved and retained. So as Jack said, this is the, the Carriage House at the, sort of at the rear of the property. The Carriage House was converted to an apartment sometime around 1990. And in that conversion, significant changes had occurred to the, to the property. There were new entrances added, windows were changed, windows were added. And it's, it's sort of experienced many iterations of alterations over the years, most recently in its conversion in 1990 to a, to a residence. Here's some views of the side and the rear. It's important to note sort of the, the size particularly of the roof. It's a pretty significant roof. It's a, which is really one of its character-defining features, but yet poses one of the biggest challenges in, with the idea of converting it to a residential use. That back elevation of the, of the slope of the roof would clearly need to be pretty heavily modified with additional windows or dormers to make it a viable use as, as a residence. It's also important to sort of put it in the context of the other three buildings, the three houses that Jack just went through. You know, while it's, you know, sort of gives the appearance of a, you know, one-story or one-and-a-half-story Carriage House, it's really pretty, a pretty significant building. Now, the footprint of the Devens House is approximately 2,200 feet, square feet. Walcott, 2,400 square feet. The Manor House, 3,700 square feet. And the Carriage House, or the Stables, has a square, a footage, square footage of 3,500 square feet, so almost as large as, as the Manor House. So that being said, it's not only a difficult building to reuse, but it's also a difficult building to relocate, if that was, you know, considered an option. Alan will go through some of the site plans or site layouts to give you a sense of what retaining the, the Carriage House would do as far as it relates to the, the land plan.
All right, so as we discussed with some of the, the same images, or nearly the same images, earlier this month, we have, excuse me, I was hitting the, the light. Four units in this area, as proposed. There are two duplexes there, and a fifth unit here, Building 10. And one of the pieces that, in the underlying zoning and the goals of preserving the existing buildings was to preserve existing context, sort of the way the buildings experienced in, in fronting the site. So being able to, to do that in regards to the Carriage House really puts a lot of pressure on this portion of the site, and the ability to, to sort of fulfill the spirit of the zoning in regards to preserving it is one of the impacts of, of saving it. As the site plan has developed, we have a utility corridor along here as well. You know that the high point of the site is here, so we have water and sewer needs coming down through here just as they loop generally in the road. We have a high point here. So some of those systems are coming down through this zone. So that is also a piece of knitting this all together, and we'd have to work around. So sort of as we look at preserving it, we have site space limitations, utility, and as Doug said, the, the actual sort of changes that would be required to the building and what that would mean. So we've talked about the additions. What we've also haven't talked probably enough about yet is the new architecture because of Jim's illness tonight, and I believe at an earlier date as well. And we had hoped to have Jim here to talk about all the new buildings, but in particular, the, the A unit, which is the, of, of the, the single-family homes, unit, new construction. The A is the predominant building type we're using, which is a, a building which takes and has from the start taken its sort of, sort of design inspiration from the, the Carriage House with its forms. You know, we're using that behind the Devens House in the carriage-like subsidiary building relationship, those two units. We're using with modification, little variation, that same side entry garage with the connector wing behind the Manor House, suggesting the, the, the way, you know, as, as the Historic Commission's note phrased it in terms of the, the outbuildings and the, the multiple outbuildings and the relationship of multiple outbuildings to, to one another and to the primary residences. We've tried to do that within the new architecture, and are doing that around the site. So, you know, as we look at the options for responding to this request, we've also want to point to what we are doing with the, the new buildings and how we've used this unit around the site, but also to raise what we're doing and maybe variations on what we're doing with this unit to get at the spirit and the, the purpose of the request, but with a building such as this, which is, has a footprint which is consistent with the, the home size and use and form of the new units.
Alan, this is, that was a single-family?
This is a single-family unit, this A unit, yes.
But if you go back to the site plan, you have two, two families there in that location, right?
Correct. Right, so we have a...
You have an elevation of...
That's, that's the A unit.
Right there.
Yep.
Is the A unit. That's that A unit's a single-family.
With the front-loaded garage.
Essentially being located behind the Devens, and it's similar to the unit that's being placed behind the Manor House.
But what you have in that location are the type that has basically four garage doors facing the street per building, right?
Correct. Right.
Can I keep going?
Yep. So we, we looked at these, January 3. Some color added now to, to sort of pull out what, what's happening. So the proposed plan, a variation on that, which would save the Carriage House, introduce four more As for a, for a barn-like, workyard-like configuration. We do have that utility corridor. We, we are, you know, stepping on a, a significant grove of trees which we've worked to save.
But you're adding a unit there in that count?
Nope, five units.
So that, so you're saying that the Carriage House is a single-family?
A single-family. Yep. So if you make it a duplex, you still have five units. And that, that's a, the addition of a, of a garage-sized volume without knowing what other additions or modifications would, would happen there. Here would be an option with, without retaining the Carriage House, but using the A-type unit as a duplex, adjoining to, to create a bit more room. And then here's color added to the proposed plan. To speak to, you know, what we're trying to do in the, the broader zone here of the Walcott Cluster, giving sufficient sort of space and to this whole arc of trees.
Has the Historical Commission seen these alternatives yet?
Not, not unless they looked at the presentation from January 3. The, just, we, we haven't shown grading here. Remember that the site is climbing here. These homes are pushing into the slope. These would be walk-out or daylight, partially exposed, lower levels. These would be pushing into the slope. So what we're, what we're showing here, I know, Cheryl, we've talked about Building 10 before and why its grading and finished floor was set where it was relative to the, the upside of the unit. And sort of placing these on the site in concept, at concept level yet, is really working the same way that, you know, we've looked at a couple of these units, being able to, to break the grade either way around that building, but we're plowing into the slope here and, you know, cranking up the grade to get into the garage as we, we come up slope here. So there are, there's that piece of the...
Can you go back one slide, please? Okay, how many more slides do you have, Alan?
That's it in terms of a Carriage House discussion. And so this is a summary which you've seen before, again, that kind of bullet points the, points we've discussed.
So really, the last piece on the Carriage House, the issue of the restoration of the building itself and its ability to be reused is difficult. Site plan issues which are significant and really get at blowing up areas of significant trees and other natural features. The last thing is that, from a process perspective, we started the site planning, zoning discussions with the neighborhood in April of 2016. During the year of 2016, the basic bylaw was written based on site plans that were developed and submitted to, for the article, the town meeting article warrant for January of 2017. In 2016, we met three times with, with the Historical Commission as part of a broad range of meetings we had with neighborhood, this board, other boards about what was being discussed. The only two buildings that were ever discussed for restoration and preservation were the Manor House and the Walcott Manor. It wasn't until town meeting May of 2017 that the Devens House was added as a request. That resulted in a reduction in total units on-site from 58 to 54. It's a significant economic reduction to the project. The movement, the creation of the 550-foot setback, the moving, moving of four of the 10 units that were set in down below up into this area, which further tightened the area within the upper loop. And based on that combination of exercises, we embarked on 15 to 18 months of site plan... And based on that combination of exercises, we embarked on 15 to 18 months of site plan, architecture, et cetera, development that led to the filing of the special permit. It was only at the time of the filing of the special permit that we learned that the Historical Commission was making a specific request that we preserve the carriage house building. That would have forced a complete change in the development of the site plan. And, you know, these images show impacts to that site plan, which have been studied, but further detail would obviously get at the grading issues associated with different options around the carriage house. So we think on balance, the board, the bylaw itself speaks to the preservation of three buildings, obviously authorizes this board to require preservation of additional buildings. But we start with the site plan, we start with the land, we start with the development of the site. We think if this preservation of this building is not warranted, then we would strongly request this board to not accept the recommendation of the Historical Commission.
All right. Given the hour, we haven't allowed the Historical Commission much time, so I would like us to hear from them next, please. Sorry, is that too bright, Brian?
It's all right. We assume that was a logical breakpoint, so we'll step aside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Go ahead. We'll make some room and then whomever from the Historical Commission, Mr. O'Donnell, who'd like to join you, please come forward. Thank you for your patience in the rescheduling of this discussion. I know you've been here and had to leave and we didn't get a chance, and now we're at a late hour. And so if we can't cover everything you'd like to cover tonight, we'd be happy to have you back. I hate to do that to you, but I do want to give you adequate time. Don't want you to feel rushed, okay?
We would be happy to return if that's appropriate. I have to say that we're pretty much in agreement with what was presented about the three main buildings. They've responded to our comments, and quite honestly, we're talking about preservation here.
I'm sorry, Steve, just for the record, can you introduce both yourselves?
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission, Meredith Hall, member.
Thank you.
Bill Mullin is quietly sitting in the back.
Sorry to interrupt you. I should have asked you to do that right off the bat.
That's okay.
Okay.
They've responded to our comments pretty thoroughly on those three main buildings. I do have to point out that the bylaw calls for the preservation of at least two buildings. There are nine or 10 buildings on the site. We've done virtually little discussion about any of the other buildings other than these main three and then the carriage house. I don't think it's entirely fair to say that, quote, "suddenly" we've come up talking about the carriage house at some late date. We have been meeting with Mr. Dolly and Mr. Corcoran for some time, and we had seen the presentation that you just saw way back, and they've consistently followed what they originally told us they were going to do with those three main buildings. When we asked for site plans, what are the new buildings going to look like, where were the new buildings going to be relative to the existing ones? We're working on that. We're working on that. It's not ready yet. We're working on that. The first time we saw any of that was the beginning of June this year when we were able to visit the site, and that's the first time that we saw any proposed plans for the layout of the project and so forth. And at that time, June 5, we brought up the carriage house, and we discussed it that evening in a meeting with Mr. Dolly and Mr. Corcoran. Again, the beginning of August, other members of the commission were able to visit the site, and again, they brought up the carriage house, and it was discussed at that time, not with a great deal of favor by the applicant, but it was discussed at that time. So for somebody to say in September or October, as we were told, that we suddenly came up with the idea of the carriage house, I think is not totally accurate. However, that doesn't change the fact that we are now dealing with the carriage house. The information that they presented tonight in terms of the things that we had not considered and how the carriage house really fits into their plans and alternatives we had not seen before. It perhaps would be helpful if we could get copies of what they showed so that we could discuss it. Clearly, what I just saw in terms of what they suggested as a redesign certainly would impact the area around the Walcott mansion. Nevertheless...
So, I'm sorry, may I just ask for clarification? So what you'd like copies of are these alternative site plans?
Yes, the alternatives they showed and what's on the screen right now.
Okay.
Certainly, that would impact. Well, obviously, if you're going to place four units in a building, four units in a building, in a space where there is currently one, those units have to be relocated someplace else. We understand that. I'm not sure that there's only one way to do that. We think the carriage house is worth preserving. I know they say it's too big for a single. Well, it's the same size as their other singles. They say it's maybe too small for a duplex, but it's about the same size with minor modifications of a duplex. So I'm not convinced that it's an impossibility. In the special permit application, they only showed you pictures of four buildings. The manor house, the Walcott house, the Devens' house, and the carriage house. So they felt it important enough from the get-go to include a picture of it and to say we're going to mimic some of the design elements in it. If you're going to mimic some of the design elements, why not keep what you have there already? However, we would be happy to continue to look at the situation with what they've presented and see what other possibilities might possibly exist. Meredith has done quite a bit of work. She was able to attend one or two of the prior meetings where other elements of this were discussed, and I think it might be useful to mention some of that tonight.
I'm just going to highlight things quickly because I know we all would like to move through everything, but there were some things that involve the historic preservation of the elements architecturally as well as the property itself. The first item I just would want to mention is the stone walls in the property, that the stone walls that should be consistent throughout the property, including the retaining walls and the stone facades on the townhomes. I think it's really important to the quality of the project that there be uniformity throughout the property.
I'm sorry, Meredith, one second. You're asking that new walls be consistent with the existing?
The new walls reflect with the old walls, with existing old walls, such as on the manor, on the manor house, reflecting the granite walls dominant on the terrace and the patio and steps of the manor house. I would recommend that there would be, we would recommend, I should say, that there be a mock-up of these stone facades, especially on the retaining walls. It's very easy for them to show a picture of what the stone will look like, but when you see it in person, it's very common to have a sample mock-up done for a project where you all can actually see the level of quality of what the stone-faced walls will look like. And that will ensure high-quality materials to be used throughout. And in considering possibly where the guardrails are, possibly, as if you've ever driven down Stonebridge Lane, they used a lot of stone-faced walls as guardrails, and I think that would be more attractive rather than, you know, just a standard guardrail. I'm not sure exactly what they've designed, and it would be more historically appropriate. Also, really looking, and I know Cheryl, you've mentioned this, but really trying to minimize the size of the retaining walls as much as possible throughout the project. We don't have an ordinance that says four foot is our limit, but it would be nice if we could keep those. There are quite a few retaining walls around the new townhomes that are being proposed. The new stone entrance, we would like to see mirroring the existing entrance in materials, height and scale of the stonework, including repointing, which should be done by someone who's experienced in repairing and replacement of historic stone walls. And we have had this issue in the past, so I just want to bring it up. Are we certain that that stone wall is on Walcott's property or is it on town-owned property? Just, I hope that there's been a plot plan looked at really closely because we just had this experience on Hillside where the stone wall, it was assumed that the land went to the stone wall, clear cut up until that point, but that we really should look at who actually owns that stone wall, whether the town or the developer owns that. And it would be nice for, especially if it is on town-owned property, that we see where the new marking, what they, how much of the stone wall that they plan to take out, if there was some way to subtly mark that so we could all, everyone could really see how much of that stone wall is being removed. Regarding fencing, split-rail fence in a natural wood finish, which has been removed already from, and it was in deteriorating condition, understood, along the meadow in the Devens' house, we would like to see that replaced as much as possible in its meadow original location along the meadow. It might be nice to stake it before construction starts so we know where that fence line was running up against the meadow, again, prior to construction, to retain the property's original agricultural. And we really hope that it is a natural split rail, very appropriate for a historic property, rather than what they did use at Woodmere, which is a vinyl, plastic, really a dark-green vinyl that just would not be appropriate for the site. Scenic roadways. We really feel strongly that the, as much as possible, and again, Cheryl, I just want to commend you for really looking at this, especially with the retention basins, that the no-touch buffer should as much as possible be a no-touch per the bylaw. This really has been an issue for the Historical Commission, the planning board, is how we preserve our scenic roadways. Is this really, in some areas, it's only, the buffer is only 15, maybe 20 feet deep. It's really not that deep. So as much of that, there shouldn't be any reason that that shouldn't be fenced off and preserved. And the pervious path, not paved, and we'll get to that, which is being recommended by the Bicycle Advisory Committee, we would like to have that placed within the buffer, especially if it's nearly five feet. There's no way to put a five-feet pathway even meandering through without clear-cutting trees to come down. And we know when somebody comes in to create a pathway, if it is within that, inside that wood buffer, it's going to destroy our buffer. And I think as much as possible, we owe it to the Town of Milton that when they drive up that scenic road, the beautiful part of Canton Ave, that it looks just like it does today. We don't want that to change. So by moving, we're all very much in favor of the pathway, but if you put it inside the woods where the lawn and the meadow begin, that way you don't, you have, for the developer, it's less maintenance because they don't have to worry about trees falling on the paths. It's much safer in many ways to have it in open space, and it would meander along within the base of the meadows and the base, but inside the woods, so they don't have, we don't have to take down any of those woods and can really save, and even, you know, clear-cutting or cleaning up in there vegetation. A lot of that is the future understory, that when the older trees die, you have new trees that are constantly emerging, and we don't want to clear-cut the understory to that buffer because it really doesn't protect the scenic roadway. Excuse me. And again, you know, Woodmere had said when they did Brush Hill Road that they were going to protect the woods and protect that buffer, and then they made an agreement with the neighbors, and everyone was so disappointed, and now there's dying Christmas trees to the left of the drive when you come in, and we don't want that to be the case for Walcott. Minimizing paving, we think is also very important, possibly by narrowing the new entrance, the roadway, per which I really, we really liked what the developers said, the recommended standards for the rural local street, that we think reducing rather than 11- to 12-foot lanes, actually reducing to a 10-foot lane, reducing, and really being sensitive that this is a historic landscape, would take just your view, your vista coming in, having more of a narrow roadway, would, and also suggesting to actually remove the paved sidewalk along this roadway. And the reason why, it's actually very, it's a logical, if you look at the boundary, and what I like is that there is a loop that goes around the property. So you have the original drive, which will no longer be, traffic will be allowed. That would be your, part of your circular route. You would come down to your pathway. The pathway would actually connect across the property to the current Devens' Drive and come up the property, and there is already a path that leads right up and makes your circular loop right back up to the top properties. That way, the sidewalk that comes down the middle, I really think is not going to be utilized. There's really nowhere you would walk if you're doing that, if you're doing that loop. That's going to put you out to a really busy area on Canton Ave, which does not have sidewalks. So I think you would obtain your goal of having that loop for a walkway. You would come around and have that circular path by connecting to that Devens' driveway. If you didn't, that's a different story, but I think now that you've agreed to connect that to the Devens' driveway, that would be a way to do that, and again, removing impervious surface and just making it, really trying to maintain the natural landscape as much as possible in the current historic landscape views. The residents of the Blue Hills property, I think, would also use the existing driveway. If you were approaching from Lower Canton Ave, if you were walking up to approach the Blue Hills, you would use the current driveway, which will not have vehicular traffic at that time. I think that would logically make sense. And also minimizing berms, I think keeping it as natural as possible, I would say, you know, if you look at the Eustace Estate, natural, I mean, they've gone, and it really allows for natural drainage to the property. So minimizing pervious, impervious surface and as much as possible. The new paths, we also believe should be pervious per the great estate bylaw and really be sensitive to the design, to the natural and historic landscape. I understand, my husband is a biker. I understand biking through this area. It's a beautiful area, but I will tell you, and this is actually taking for the Bicycle Advisory Committee, as for the strong and fearless people who do bike on Canton Ave, they're generally fast riders. Also, Canton Ave is one of the few roads passing through the Blue Hills Reservation, so it is one of the few paths for bikeless to use in this area. Finally, this is part of the popular Blue Hills training loop, Canton Ave, Unquity Road, Hillside, Blue Hill River Road, Route 138. There are, the Blue Hills Cycling Group is a very large, active group who does do this loop at which they are referring to. They ride in packs, and they go, even with their own statistics, on an average of just under 30 miles per hour. These bikers are not going to come down and get off and meander through a lovely path. They are biking fast, they're strong bikers, and that is who we're going to use. Regarding having kids from neighboring, I think that's wonderful if they want to come over and ride their bike, but they can do that on a beautiful crushed stone. We're all for handicap accessibility. This all can be handicap accessible and crushed stone. Again, go over to the Eustace Estate, see how they've done it on a historic property, and it would really be a more sustainable and really provide wonderful bicycling and pedestrian use in a very safe way, but in a very realistic way that this property is going to be used. I don't think you're going to see those, the bicycles that are doing this loop cutting off and coming through. It just, it's very, you know, driveway to driveway. I don't think that's a reason to pave over that. And it's also, really, again, for the developer, you know, I look at my sidewalks, it's, there's frost heaves, there's all kinds of things. It really becomes more of a maintenance issue, I think, long-term as well. And then just lamp posts, the proposed lower lighting proposed by the developer, I think, is an excellent idea. Anyone who drives along, when the ski slopes are lit up, you can see it, you know, coming from 128, and you very much would be able to see that from Canton Ave. You would be able to see the lighting, so keeping it a lower height absolutely makes sense. Retention basins, we really would not like to see those within the no-touch buffer zone, should be placed in a location where the natural basin currently exists below the meadow and designed such that a split rail and a vinyl chain-link fence is not necessary. And I think we can do better on that. I know that was something that Stan Tech recommended, significantly altering the historic and scenic landscape. So if a retention basin could be designed that doesn't need to be fenced, especially with a vinyl chain-link, would really be wonderful. with a vinyl chain link, would really be wonderful. And again, and maybe an engineer could look at this, topographical contours to seek utilizing conditions and minimize the cut and fill, which is located in that area, proposed in open spaces and preserving the historic landscape. Signage, signage at the entrance should be considered by the planning board appropriate for a historic property and setting, subject to the design review by the planning board, the historical commission. I think what they did do at Woodmere was, was excellent. It's very, it's carved into the stone, I think it's very appropriate, something like that would be very appropriate. But I think you should want to see what that signage will look like. Architecture, a couple of things that we did not know, that weren't certain because of the new drawings, there is architectural applique on the peaks of the dormers of the manor house, very ornate detailing. When they're reshingling, we would, we hope that that applique can remain. And there's also some arched architectural moldings, which is currently painted purple, if you look at the building up close, that is over the windows, that that would be retained also. Those architectural features which make the property very unique would be retained. Also, when they're looking at the windows, the cross mullions on both the carriage house and the manor house, they have a crisscross pattern, so it's not all just standard windows. That's custom. I don't know if that can be retained, the original windows, but the cross paint mullions replicated. Again, the iron gate, which they've said they would keep, which is just really beautiful. And the, the deck, we had mentioned trex. Trex, many homeowners are getting away from this, it can be very slippery. So we, we didn't, we had in there the trex decking for the manor house, but also wood would actually be more historically accurate and be very appropriate. The wall cut, we just wanted to make sure that dentil molding was retained on all the roof lines. I know they said all of the, everything most of the facade, but that the dentil molding would also be remained, would remain, especially if they're doing new stucco work on that. Windows and walls in the townhomes have, there's many walls that have, in many locations, have features with flat walls and two tiny windows, small windows, that I think should be looked at architecturally for review. It's in an overhead height. The bylaw says that there should not be small windows. I think, I'm not sure what they were trying to achieve by this, but maybe that should be, the size of those windows for proper design should be looked at. And also possibly, because it is a very flat facade, oftentimes if they're emulating a shingle style, there'll be a splay at the bottom. The shingles will actually have a splay at the bottom, two and a half to three feet, which sort of kicks out and it makes the image of a skirt. That would also prevent it from just looking like a strong, like a flat, an interesting wall. Carriage house, we would very much like to see that preserved. And by peer review, we would ask for, by a historic preservation specialist, to make, to ensure construction plans conform with the bylaw standards and to encourage Northland to, to work, if possible, with Historic New England on preservation easements for the exterior of the historic structures. Lastly, I'm sure you'll be talking about this, but I'm just, we would be curious to know about bonding of trees. There are only, on the plans, apparently only 16 trees that are designated as significant trees. We believe there are probably far more trees than just 16 on 47 acres. But, so bonding is really important. And also, if you've ever considered doing bonding on the restoration of historic properties, the town of Ipswich bonds for that, to make, to ensure that the work is done properly on that as well, so.
We've tried to look at the whole site as a historical and cultural asset of the town. Yes, we're charged particularly with the buildings, but we've tried to look at the entire site. After all, this is a great estates plan unit development. It should look as much as it possibly can like a great estate when it's finished. Obviously, it's not going to look the same as it does now, but there ought to be as many elements included, whether it's landscaping or trees or paving or, or the buildings themselves, that would lend themselves to look like a great estate. We're concerned about preservation, but we also know it's not a museum. We tried to be, look at materials, for example, and things that just have to be done because this is a construction project. It's not a museum, but it is preservation. And as much of this great estate is to be preserved in one fashion or another is what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Meredith, can you submit to us your comments?
Yes, I wrote on this one, but I'll email it to Lauren. Lauren, Lauren, okay, great. I won't do that, so you'll have it. Thank you.
I do have a question for you also.
Do you want me to ask mine while you find?
Yes. Did you have any suggestions on how to cover that, that area, the storm drainage down by?
Retention basins?
Yes.
Well, typically, you would want it to look as natural as possible, which, if you look at the current driveway to the manor house, there's actually natural retention basins on each side, and you almost would not notice that they're there. So as, I would, I'm not an engineer, but as natural, I think, as, as possible. The Pulte does not have any fencing around, they have some real major retention basins. They've used rock to, you know, sort of edge and border, but I don't know that that's the look that we want. I think we really would like to try to utilize the natural contours as much as possible. And if we reduce impervious surfaces, that may allow this, the retention basins, that it would be necessary, and minimize the amount of berm and maybe use some of the natural. On 47 acres, there should be allowed, you know, some natural drainage that would be very effective as well. But I'm not sure how they, I know that was Stan Tech's, that was not the original, and that was not Northland's recommendation to put a fence around it.
Right.
So I think maybe there's a way to look at that, that maybe it could be designed such that a fence would not be required, so.
Thank you. I'm sure we're going to be hearing more suggestions, but I was interested in yours.
Yeah, just as you move along, so. And I'll, I'll email these comments.
Okay, so were you planning to revise your comments from October 3?
These were supplemental. A lot of this information, we were, we were having to write this in September without knowing what the plan was. So we never got to see the roadway, you know, or so anyway, so that would, those can be combined and put together with that, if that's easier, or sent as an addendum, whichever you would like.
And some of this was a result of what you heard at the prior meetings?
Yes, this was.
It, either way, I mean, this can stand alone as it is, and you can send supplemental. There's just some things in, in here that I would like to ask you about.
Yeah.
Perhaps at another time.
Right.
And then also the applicant, because there is under your, there's a paragraph, I guess, E, additional understandings, and the first one is, is understood that all work as described above shall conform to Department of Interior standards for historic preservation. And there are different standards, you know, within that.
Right.
Like, there's different levels, and the book is probably like this thick.
Right.
So I think if there's an intent to reference those, we probably need to think about which parts of it are referenced. And then part of it will be, how, how is that sort of enforced or secured, if you will?
Right.
So the, the plans will need to go to the building department, you know, for final building permits, because what's submitted to us are not the final construction plans, you know?
Right, right.
Until the project's approved, most applicants don't do their final, final on everything, because it would, you know, it's a, it is a significant expense if they're not granted their approvals, right? So that's something to think through a little bit more.
That has to be modified, because we've already agreed to different kinds of materials.
Yeah.
Again, it's not a museum, it's, it's a living.
Right, and where these structures have been altered a lot over time, you probably know that you have to kind of pick a date, right? That you probably are working towards, so, and then what's consistent with that date, right? So, and then, do you have any historical records of what these, how these were built?
How they were built, or what they originally looked like?
Well, I was saying how is more like materials, but, I mean, I guess.
Not really, only the information from, from macros. I mean, the records, records weren't kept.
Right.
You know, pyramids were required, they just went out and built them. So it's very difficult.
Master craftsmen.
Yeah, it's very, it's very difficult. We know the Walcott mansion was, was significantly renovated. The, the Devon's, of course, is like the 1930s, so that's probably pretty much the way it was. But the records just aren't there to document. But we think the manor house is pretty much original. Walcott has been modified.
So I think we'll work, as we work through our schedule, the coming meetings, we'll think about when it might be appropriate, time for you to come back, okay? But in the meantime, we'll also request that these alternate site plans be sent to you, okay? All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so why don't we talk about the next meeting?
And then have to approve these.
Of the meeting minutes, so, thank you. I just want, just wanted to make sure we set out, everybody understands what the next topics are.
Just, there are a couple of people here that have been sitting here all night.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sorry, does anybody that's sitting here all night wish to come speak to us? No? Okay.
Anyone else for citizen's speech? No.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me. So we had, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the schedule. Does anybody have the schedule handy? Ned, maybe you?
I think the, my understanding of the schedule was that tonight was to be architecture and historic preservation. We get through a lot of historic preservation, but obviously no architecture. The 14th, I think, was going to be for tree preservation and construction management. And then the 28th was to address, sort of a wrap-up, addressing the comments, follow-ups, there was no specific.
Yeah, so there have been.
So we know that we've got to make up a night, part of a night, anyway, for the architecture. I wonder whether we try to do architecture on the 24th with construction management, and then.
Have we done landscape, or is that part of?
We've not done landscape and tree preservation.
Landscape and tree preservation.
They should be together.
They're already together next time, and.
We're going to get Jim in here. But we, probably need to get the architect in.
Well, I think on the, the landscape and tree preservation, you have an arborist, I understand, right? Can you have the arborist attend?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, we had asked for some things, yes, Lauren?
I'd just like to raise a concern with scheduling on the 28th, since Bryant won't be here. And Bryant already filled out one of those here.
I was trying to raise that myself right now. That's going to be a problem. What date are we talking about?
February 28th.
All right, so let's look at the calendar, then.
So what if we just don't do Walcott that night?
You'd have to skip it, yeah.
Yeah, we have to, right.
You're gone the whole week?
It's not worth.
I know, but you're gone the whole week, right?
And the week before, yes.
You're gone for the two weeks? Okay, so, the 14th, all right, so the other thing that I know for the 14th is we close four public hearings in November. We have draft decisions being reviewed by town council. If we don't get those done by, by the 14th, we're going to need to request extensions from all of the applicants. I spoke to John about that today and asked if he could get us the draft decisions to review a couple of days before the 14th, so that we didn't, so if, that everyone would have a chance before the meeting to review them. Do we have anything else for the 14th?
Do you, your public hearing for your zoning art?
No, they voted that, they're not doing that.
Yeah, that got rejected.
Right, so I guess, if the majority of the 14th.
We'll bring the, the architect, we'll bring the landscape, we'll bring the arborist, and.
Yeah, and I guess with the landscape, I had asked for some additional information about the retaining walls, about what that site section is like through there. I've asked for some things today. I asked for some additional information of the architect. I'd like to have all that submitted before the next meeting, so I can review it in advance of the meeting.
We have three weeks. We'll get that.
We have 20 slides, we could go right now if you want.
If you want to send the slides, too, I mean.
Bill has the slides.
They're on, they're on the.
We, we have all that, we did it all.
So it's all here that you didn't get to? Okay, sorry about that.
And we submitted, I submitted my memo today, some other items that were follow-ups to earlier requests that I knew you weren't going to have time to think about for tonight. They've been filed, and so you'll have access to them.
Do you have them in your packets tonight?
Oh.
I will provide them electronic this morning.
All right, so.
So where are we on the peer review for, is it landscape, architecture, or arborist? I don't even know what we decided on last week, but I think you guys are going to put your heads together and try to come up with a scope of work. Did you get anything done?
No.
I can take a stab at that. I mean, sure.
Maybe they can share it with you, get your feet back.
Yeah, I can, I can work with you on that, if you like. I have some ideas, I have, I have a couple ideas of independent people and how it might work.
So I think it's important to talk schedule with that, whoever that is, because the feedback would need to be timely if we're going to.
We also had met twice and had sitewalked with the State Tree Advisory Committee, which was specifically tasked under the bylaw to review issues associated with tree preservation. And so they ought to be.
They are coming.
Available at the next, that meeting, and perhaps their comments could be, if they have written comments, they could submit those to you for review. That may, or may not, address other concerns about peer review on the, on, but, you know, they, there are some pretty sophisticated people on that committee, and they really sort of rolled their sleeves up with us as we went through the site plan, the tree preservation plan, and walked the site pretty intensively with them, so.
So, Denny, I know you keep in close touch with them, I don't know if you're going to speak with them, but one place that they could be helpful is landscaping in lieu of a fence around the basin, some sort of landscape solution for safety, or whether or not they even think that's necessary.
Right. So one thing I would ask is for feedback from Deb, right, on the requirements for the basin, just because I think there, I'm sure there are requirements, and it's got to be able to hold the water, right? So I don't know what they are, I'm sure she knows what they are, and, you know, if you're working with her on how to soften that, so it's a more natural landscape look, rather than a basin look, like you go down Unquity Road and you drive past the Pulte Development, and you look next to Unquity Road, it doesn't look very natural there. We don't, that's what we don't want. So, if you, I think it's something we've already talked about, what Meredith raised tonight, so it is important.
We've talked about it from a couple of different angles, and I think we've come a long way with it, I think we haven't shown you everything yet.
Yeah, so, and, and given the proximity to the Canton Avenue and visibility of it, that particular one's very important, right? So we want to get that right. Okay, so, if we want to try and accomplish as much as we can on the 14th, the 28th agenda might be extraordinarily light. Do people have availability to start the meeting on the 14th at 6:30 rather than 7? No? Okay. All right, so then, if we, next meeting would be March 14th?
February 14th.
No, after that.
Oh, after that would be, unless you select another date.
So are we. And then March 28th is our next meeting. So if we just think through the schedule, then you have April 11th and April 25th, and the election is April 30th. So we would need to vote, I mean, ideally, with the board that's been reviewing this all along, so I think the goal would be to vote it before, and part of it would be having time to write the, the decision, so I was trying to backing, you know, back, look at these dates, sort of looking forward. Also, I think it's, there's a lot to try and cover on the 14th, but then it'll be a month to the 14th of March. Is there any work that the board can do during that month? We might want to think about whether it's, thinking about what conditions mean, we've heard a lot of different things, are there things that we want them to be thinking about in that month-long period in terms of conditions, so that on the 14th of February, we can give them that information, so that they can think about it for that month? I'm just trying to think about how to use the time, so I don't know if anyone has any suggestions, but we've heard a lot of information to digest about historic tonight, so maybe you'll have some reply back to some of that, as you did for the October memo that they did.
I mean, does it make sense to look at February 7th? They already have their architectural presentation ready.
We can certainly be available on the 7th.
Just call off the 28th.
Works for me.
7th and 14th, does that work for anybody else?
I'm sorry, I'm wildly insane right now, I'm traveling pretty much all of February.
What about introducing a, a meeting in March, then? March?
March 7th.
7th.
You could, you could replace the February 28th meeting with a March 7th meeting.
I'm in Maine.
Thursday?
21st.
Actually, I might be able to do the 7th.
But next, would, a meeting next Thursday work?
31st of January, going once?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
So you're, you're saying you're not available, Brian, for like six weeks in a row?
I'm, I'm.
Not one day for six weeks?
I'm on New Orleans on the 31st, I'm in Hadley, Massachusetts, on, I can go through it with you, I'm, I know, right?
Well, I'm going to suggest a different day than a Thursday then, because, I mean, we can't have.
I booked my life around Planning Board, and, I could probably do the 7th of March. I can push him, I can push a trip. That's probably the only deal, and I'm going to have flexibility around them.
All right, so we'll add March 7th.
So we're taking off the 28th?
I think it depends, if anything comes up that, but I would say, let's decide that on the 14th, okay?
So for our purposes, February 14, March 7, potentially March 14, February 28th is out.
Right.
You may have other business to, to conduct on that night.
Right, so.
Possibly.
So again, let's, let's try and think through if there's any information that people think that they would like to receive. Yeah, you know, because we'll have that time in between for them to work on it. So with that, then I'll need a motion to continue this hearing to February 14th, at what time?
7:15.
So moved. You did it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm going to approve these minutes, okay? Are you ready?
Do you have the January 9th?
Should we do them fast?
Yeah, I'm trying, January 9th, right here.
Can you just do that as a separate focus?
Yes, okay, I'll start, okay. I'm going to try to be Brian, okay?
Good luck.
Please approve.
It's a pretty tough job.
How do we, what do I say?
Like to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning Board meeting minutes of December 13th, 2018.
As amended?
Oh, as amended, I'd like to make, oh, can I amend one little word right there? Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve meeting Planning Board minutes of January 3rd, 2018, as amended. I would like to make a motion, I should have said it, and.
That's okay, you do great.
I would like to make a motion to, I wasn't frying it at all. There is, January 10th, Planning Board meeting minutes.
As amended.
Second.
Okay, and now, all in favor?
Wait, wait, yeah, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve Planning Board meeting minutes from January 9th, 2019.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstaining?
An extension.
Yep. Motion to adjourn, I'll take it?
Second.
You're going to make it.
Oh.
So moved.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.